You do have time to vote and we do have a place for you to drop off your ballots at the rec center. We have all of our council members present this evening. To my right, we have Councilmember Rich Klein. Next to me, Councilmember Catherine Carlton. To my left is Vice Mayor Ray Mueller. And next to Ray is Councilmember Kirsten Keith. Over at that table on your right, my left, is the City Manager Alex McIntyre, who just stepped away, and the City Attorney Bill McClure. And I see the City Manager coming back in. Over on this side of the dais is our City Clerk Judy Heron. And I'd like to mention, right up front, that if you'd like to speak on either in our public comments section or on any item on the agenda, we ask you to fill out a card at the back table, and please provide that card to Judy, and she'll organize it, and we'll call you up at the appropriate point. If I can ask all of you to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So, I don't have any actions to report from our closed session, and I also wanted to take this opportunity to announce that if that regular business I-1, which is the charter measure, is going to be postponed to the next meeting, which is on the 19th. So, I just wanted to make sure if any of you are either watching or planning to be here, at that time, we'll mention, we'll talk about that. But there's some issues that came up that felt that the report needed to be revised. So, okay, next item is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once, under public comment, for a limit of three minutes. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. We have a couple of speakers this evening. Nettie Weisman, I apologize if I didn't...
Del Norte Avenue.
Okay, so Weisman, is that... Weisman, okay. Followed by Carmen Mian, oh, Carmen Mian has donated time to you. So, donated time to Nettie. Good evening.
Figure I can't see. Okay, I have to do this, sorry, guys. Have to look at this microphone. My name is Nettie Weisman, and I've lived on Del Norte Avenue for over 30 years. I'm here tonight to present some concerns regarding the Flood Park development. I did just learn today that Samhitahto County will not be presenting their draft EIR to the Parks Commissioners for final approval, as it was originally planned for Thursday. It has been not loud enough. Can you hear me now? Oh, there it is. Should I start over? Anyway, I just learned today, I'm Nettie Weisman, talking about Flood Park, I just learned today that Samhitahto County will not present the draft EIR to the Parks Commissioners for final approval until, originally it was on Thursday, and they're going to delay it until August 2nd. So, there's many problems with this EIR analysis. So, I just today want to talk a little bit about some of the concerns we have as neighbors. First, who uses this park? Mostly, you know, neighbors walk in the park, neighbors use the playground, but most of the people that use this park are residents from East Palo Alto, East Menlo Park, North Fair Oaks neighborhood, where there's limited recreation. They have lots of family, community, and church gatherings. The park is full of activity from, you know, mid-April till October. The EIR says there's plenty of parking. They used a parking table. They said, based on the size of the park, they only need 125 parking spaces. Well, the parking lot's nearly full now, it's just passive recreation. There's no active recreation unless it's volleyball, or something that somebody brings along, because the baseball field's been closed for years. Saturday night, I went over to the park at 7:15 PM. There were still 123 cars in the parking lot. That was at the end of the day. There's not adequate parking to accommodate two fields, as is what is being proposed in this EIR, and all these other activities that are also proposed, along with the passive park users now. There's already queuing on Bay Road on Saturdays and Sundays. This will only get worse, even if there's no parking fees, which has been suggested. The parking lot for Flood Park is very long and skinny, so it's one car in and one car out. There is a turnaround deep in the park, which they're proposing for drop-off. However, to get there, you have to go down a long path of cars that are parking to turn around and leave. So, this is like going to a crowded shopping center during the holidays. I experienced this kind of collision factor last fall, when I was setting up a booth at the Samhitahto Expo, and I ended up parking on a field, or a street that had sports fields. And when I left at the end of the days, I just sat there. So, what's going to happen? People are going to use the Iris Lane Gate to drop off kids and supplies with the field so close. The Iris Lane Gate is right at the end of Del Norte and Iris. We will have speeding cars down our streets every hour, every day, on weekends and after school. One of the big things that the EIR did not analyze is all phases of the plan. It's a three-phase plan to be built over 10 years. They only analyzed Phase 1, which is mostly sports. They didn't analyze any impacts of games, including spectators, in the part that they did analyze. All activities in Phase 2 and 3 were mentioned only at a programmatic level. Phase 2 includes playground replacement, picnic renovation, and gathering meadow. All of these are high-use activities, not even analyzed. The master plan of 1983 stated, when park capacity reached about 1,800 people, and a doubleheader baseball game was played, space for picnic users was limited. And this was only with one field. Now, two are proposed. So, I say, are current users of the park going to get squeezed out? They also used data to represent park usage from 2011 to 2015. The park was completely closed in 2011 for the PUC project. It didn't open until November of 2012, and it was slow to have people start coming back for the first couple of years, and they used that as the representative of park usage. That was probably the lowest usage in history of that park. So, traffic. It also showed that there is a serious traffic impact at the intersection of Bay Road and Ringwood during the afternoon commute. This cannot be mitigated. There's a lot of school kids and bikes that go down that pathway, as they're returning from Laurel and from Menlo-Atherton High School. This intersection, per Menlo Park's LOS system, is currently at a C, but almost at a D. It will be at an unacceptable D or worse before this plan is implemented. Games during the late afternoon will just add to this congestion. It's kind of like pouring gas on a fire. So, one of the things that I did is I circulated a petition on four streets on the southeast side of the park, Del Norte, Iris Lane, Oakwood Place, and Tahama. These are streets closest to the park. 90% of neighbors from 54 addresses reached support development of a multi-use field. 98% of residents on Del Norte do not support completion of this landscape plan. There's one family that doesn't want the soccer field, but wants their own baseball field. So, this plan would have much less impact on the park, parking, and neighbors. We have a very quiet, safe neighborhood with many small children. We are impacted by traffic and development around us increasingly. Motorists speed through our streets to avoid the Bay Road backup. Last August, my cat was killed in front of my house by a speeding motorist at about 8:30 in the morning. There's already a sign out there on Bay Road saying, "Don't turn left," but people ignore it. I understand there's a big push for sports fields, but neighbors should not have to be burdened with all of the negative effects of a poorly designed plan. Neighbors were the least considered group in this plan, yet the most affected. Fields should be by parking for easy access for disabled, for elderly, and that's where the restrooms are. I haven't even talked about the noise all day. I feel there are other solutions to what is proposed. A second field can be built on the other side of the park, if there is really room to handle the parking. I have handed out, did you get the handouts that I have there? One of them that shows the existing, I've done some circling, so there's a circle to the left of the ball field, that's where the turnaround is in the park, in the parking lot. And there's another place where I have a square rectangle outline. What I did was measure the dimensions of the tennis courts. It measures about 100, 135 feet wide by 240 feet long. I then overlaid it on the existing plan, so you can kind of see where there could be a placement for another youth field. I really ask, can the park really handle a second field? I think that's a big question. So, I just hope that in time here, you'll consider, there's a lot of comments you guys made, a lot of comments that were supportive of this landscape plan in what I saw in the comment section from the draft EIR. But basically, we've been feeling like we've been pushing against the county for the last two and a half years and getting very, very little result from them. They're just mowing this thing through. It was originally to be presented in February 2016, and the only reason it wasn't is because I started knocking on doors, I started emailing them, I had an informal meeting with Carla Schuf, their project manager, and she told me at that meeting that they didn't want to proceed with a plan that was going to cause major objections from a neighborhood, and then they have proceeded.
Okay, thank you.
Any help you can give us would be great.
Thank you, Nettie, appreciate it. Alice Newton, followed by Daniel Mian.
Daniel Mian donated time to Alice.
Oh, that's right, Daniel Mian donated time to Alice Newton. So, welcome, Alice, followed by Enrique Navas. Alice, good evening.
Hi, thank you. Let's see, is this right? I'm going to just move it a second. Well, I, first of all, thank you very much, Kirsten, for giving us this opportunity to speak. I'm going to try to stay within my limit. I wrote up what I wanted to say, so I wouldn't forget anything, and it's too scribbled over. So, I can email you later, any points that I want to add to this. But basically, like Nettie, I have lived on Del Norte Avenue, right adjacent to the park, for 31 years. A lot of the neighbors on Del Norte Avenue, there are more than 25 houses, have also lived there for decades. Our kids grew up playing soccer and baseball together. All but one of the houses is owner-occupied. So, we really know our neighborhood and the history of it. We love the park. We've had a lot of history of traffic on our streets. So, this is all really familiar in a lot of ways. There are many good things in the proposed plan for the park, a lot of things that we all like. So, I think to just, I think the core of the issue for the people on our street is this giant lacrosse soccer field that kind of showed up at the end of the community meetings in 2015. So, you know, the county received 79 comment letters to the draft EIR. One was from this council and the Parks and Recreation here. So, the plan for this giant soccer field, as it says, it's really clearly spelled out in the final EIR, is that it would be used every weekday afternoon from 4 to 7, and every Saturday and every Sunday, year-round, from 9 to 5. So, that is a whole lot, that's a whole lot for us to be sitting next to. Most of the letters that I read, almost all the ones that were sent, the comment letters, there is a lot of support, as you might have expected, for the baseball field. And I want you to know that among the neighbors on our street, I don't know of anyone who has opposed the baseball field. The baseball field is over in the center of the park. Our problem is that the design of the lacrosse soccer field is really behind our backyards. So, there is a statement in the comment letter from this council that says that Menlo Park has a number of sports fields within 100 feet of neighbors, and have received very few or none, I'm kind of quoting here, complaints about noise. So, what I have seen is that Neilon Park, which is one of those lighted fields, has wide parking areas between the field and the apartment buildings that are on two sides, and then Little House is further away on another side, and Tennis Courts on the fourth side. Burgess Park has the soccer field in the middle of the park. And Encinal School, that has a soccer field, the neighbors on Felton Drive have just had a brand-new eight-foot wooden fence erected for a sound wall. So, I think it's not true to say that there, maybe it's true that there haven't been any complaints against sound, but this field is located differently for us, except for the people on Felton Drive, and they have this new sound wall. So, I really hope that you all can have our backs and help protect us, help get a new, a different design, help tweak this park plan, so that the field is as far to the interior as we can get it. They're saying 100 feet, you know, 100 feet is like six cars absolutely up against each other, or five, like they're kind of parked, it's not that far. And if you drive by, I've been driving by these parks, you can hear the shouts, the impulse noise, from way more than 100 feet. So, it would cross, it would go across Del Norte. The whistles are designed to be heard end to end of a 300-foot field. So, 100 feet isn't really going to protect us very well. So, Nettie has some plans, if you can move, get people, encourage the county to move that park, find a way to tweak the design and put it in the interior, not up where the picnic areas are, but closer in the interior. That's what, that's one of my main points. Another thing is that the county, the county says in their ordinances, they do not do, they don't have any ordinances about quantitative noise, okay? So, they just dismiss that as, you know, they've done their studies, and they don't think this is going to bother us. So, they, they say that they issue special use permits to allow, if any, if there is a request for amplified sound. But it says also repeatedly in the EIR, that they typically do not allow amplified sound. But if you live next to the park, there is frequently amplified sound in that park. And if it's in the middle of the park, like Intel has big parties there, they took over a lot of the park, Abbott Labs, and big other groups have parties, but if it's in the middle of the park, we don't hear it much, it's really okay. But if it's over closer, like in the Redwood, if you see these, there's the Redwood picnic area, if they have amplified sound, even if they have group games, we can hear that, and it's not a problem if it's not very often. But if it's every afternoon and every weekend, all day, that's what we're talking about. So, so what I think is that since Flood Park lies on three sides, within the city limits of Menlo Park, the other side is Atherton, I would like to request that you give some consideration to pushing them to use, to honor and enforce, Menlo Park noise ordinances. You've got decibel limits on leaf blowers and on amplified sound and all of that. And I think the rangers in the park should each wear a decibel monitor. I don't care about the special use permits, than them monitoring those. What we want monitored is what you get with a special use permit. If we could get them to not allow amplified sound, they say they won't, but they do. So, if you could get them to monitor that and help protect us from too loud noises, that would be great. I want to just point quickly, if I could, I have a little handout. It's an old diagram of the flood triangle from when we had block captains, and you can ignore all that sort of stuff, that's it, Peter. So, in the left-hand section, where you can see Flood Park, the part of the draft, the final, sorry, EIR, is asking the park, the county, to install signs in the park directing people to come down our streets. To the gate on Iris, the bicyclists and people, they're worried about not having any sidewalks on a little stretch of Bay Road. Never mind that there are lots of streets in Menlo Park, including Bay Road, with no sidewalks. But they are wanting to direct traffic through our neighborhood, bicyclists and pedestrians. But to Iris Gate, the cars will follow. If the field is there, that's where they're going to drop their kids off. And that's where they're going to be tempted to park, because Menlo Park Police don't have time to enforce parking restrictions. And I don't think that's really their main, most important job, anyway. But trying to say that the park can encourage people not to park on our streets, that has never worked. We have parking restrictions, it doesn't, you know, people try to get away with it. Anyway, I very much appreciate all this, I will probably send you some more information. I really like the idea of having the field, a soccer field, a field in the park. Oh, I've just got to mention that they say, there are many letters in the, in the comment section, that MA is just completing its second lacrosse soccer field with lights. That gives, and these letters in here, there are various letters saying, that will, that will be sufficient for lacrosse and a lot of soccer. So, if we just had one more small field that would supplement for soccer, people think that would be enough. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Alice. You had a lot of good information. Can you please put it in an email? Do appreciate that, so, thank you. Enrique Navas? Enrique? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Mueller, city council members, city staff, thank you for affording me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. As we continue, Enrique Navas, Assistant Superintendent for the Sequoia Union High School District. And I'm here before you tonight, because we need a little bit of collaboration from you. Our community is demanding that we start putting some figures together in terms of what the impact is going to be, for example, from the first project that is coming online, which potentially could be the Facebook project, but also some of the projects that are in the area. The Connect Menlo has a fiscal analysis in it that includes fiscal impacts on local school districts. There is a section for Sequoia Union High School District that quotes some figures for property tax generation. We're kind of handicapped, because we don't know what the tax rate areas are included there, so we would like some additional details on the financial information to update it, because that was a couple of years ago. In addition, we started some conversations and more dialogue with Facebook. We would like to get some definite, at least some initial plans that we can take a look at, to calculate what the impact fees are going to be for them. And I was wondering if the city has some preliminary plans that we can look at. So, the reason for me being tonight here is that we would like to get those two pieces. One, the detailed information and the fiscal analysis, and two, if you have any plans for the projects that are coming online or being requested, we would like to get copies of those. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I know we have a meeting coming up, I believe, next week, with the, with the high school district. And to the two speakers that spoke on Flood Park, thank you very much. While we can't respond tonight, because it's not an agendized item, I do know, and I, I know the City Manager knows, we are taking your comments and your suggestions, and that is a, a dialogue going on with the counties. Fair enough, Alice, would you like that?
Right, just very quickly, it was through Councilmember Keith notifying me about the deadline, that, which was actually yesterday, I believe, and we were successful in prolonging the review period, and so we have time to bring this back to our council to be able to comment, and we will likely do this. It appears now, because now we're, the deadline is now August 2nd, we'll probably do this in the July meeting.
Okay, great, all right. So, thank you, we have at least an extended period to, to get those comments back. So, thank you. My notes are telling me, well, first of all, so I want to make sure there are no other public speakers under public comment. The next item on the agenda is Commissioner reports, but my notes are telling me that the Housing Commission will report at a later city council meeting, is that correct, Judy? Okay, so, we will not have a report from them. I know they've got a lot of work on their plates, so I'm looking forward to a good report. Next item is the consent calendar. There are four items on the consent calendar. Wanted to see if any item needed either a comment or, or something pulled. Councilmember Carlton.
I'd like to pull G1 and G4.
Okay. G1 and G4. Is there a motion to adopt G2 and G3?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so, Councilmember Keith seconded, Councilmember Klein moved. This is items G2 and G3.
The motion passes.
Okay, we will take G1 first.
So, for the minutes for, for 24th of April, I realize that we do kind of action item, but it lists, certain people were appointed to these committees, and it doesn't actually list what person was elected to what committee. And I would like that to be added to the minutes, because sometimes, historically, we want to go back and remember who was appointed when, and I think that's useful information for us, and so I would like to respectfully request that for that one item that we list, so-and-so was appointed to the Housing Commission, the Planning Commission, whatever, just so we have that noticed. It seems that that's an important enough detail that it should be included in the minutes, if that's okay with everyone.
That's actually a very good point, is this is on the, let me just make sure that you were, just to make sure.
Yep, my birthday.
We got this right, the April 24th meeting. Okay, so...
It's just good to capture that historically.
Mr. Mayor, that will be no problem, we can bring these back next council meeting with that listing.
Or I can approve if amended.
That's fine, whichever is the purview of the mayor.
It's probably easy enough just to have it redone and updated and brought back to us. But I do want to ask on the, there's two meeting minutes, the second, which is May 8th, do you have any comments or concerns on that? I don't know, Vice Mayor Mueller, did you have a comment?
Yeah, on the April 24th meeting minutes, it says, after, on item SS1, it says, "After discussion, the City Council expressed support for the mixed-use structure with affordable housing or an entertainment venue." My memory of the discussion that evening was an and/or, did not preclude one for the other, so I'd like to see that amendment.
I'll move approval of the 5/8 meeting minutes.
Great, is there a, all second, May 8th? So, just to clarify, we are voting only on the May 8th minutes, the April 24th minutes
The motion passes.
Okay, thank you. And item G4, Councilmember Carlton.
On the Sister City, the Sister City Committee had talked about whether, you know, because Mayor Otaki is going to be there half the time, and then he's going to leave. And we have, one of the chaperones that's coming has volunteered to be on Japan Subcommittee to be the delegated head of that group, so he will be carrying the legal papers that are signed for all of the children, and will be the contact point for whether it's parents or if anything happens. And felt that it was not necessary to send a staff member. Not only not necessary, we were given a limit of 10 kids and four chaperones, and it's an unnecessary burden on our hosts to then require them to find another home and carry the further expenses. And the Sister City Committee, we talked about it, and just felt like it wasn't really necessary. So, I hope to you that we should not send a staff member. That's not to say that we shouldn't approve a budget. Just for the record, in case anyone doesn't know, whenever any city council member has gone on any trip like this, whether it be to Ireland or Japan, we've always paid for it out of our pocket. And we do so because we want to go and we want to represent our city. And it's, it's been considered, what if we have someone on council, who maybe that's a, their mayor, but they really don't have the funds to be able to do it? You know, we can approve a couple of thousand dollars to be able to cover the plane ticket, and under that situation, I think that's acceptable. But I think in this situation, it's not necessary to send a staff member, when we have a designated leader of the group, and Peter Otaki is going to be there half the time, anyway.
Okay, Vice Mayor Mueller?
Yeah, so, this is one of those interesting issues, I think that it's just sort of come to a maturity, where now there's an issue around it. So, if this were a school that is typically in the, the practice of sending kids on trips, there is no way they would send kids without a staff member present. They would not be able to go ahead, for liability reasons, they would not be able to deputize a member of the public to be in charge of the to deputize a member of the public to be in charge of the rest of everybody else's kids for a school district-sponsored trip. So I appreciate the city manager's concern about that because I think it is difficult to say, if something were to happen on this trip in worse circumstance and a child was injured, is that person who's been delegated with authority for the trip when Peter's not there going to, what's, what's their relationship for liability to the city? So, and I frankly, it also gives rise to a number of other questions of maturity around the program. I mean, very frankly, I personally think we may look at actually taking this portion of the Sister City relationship and moving it to the school district because I think that they have expertise in dealing with kids and circumstances around trips like this. I think we're sort of doing it ad hoc, and that's not the, the best basis upon which to be dealing with kids traveling abroad. So those are my two thoughts. But I'm fine, given the fact that there will be no representative of the city with them for a portion of the trip. Not excited about spending the money, but I just think it's important to have someone in that capacity. And hopefully, and I, my expectation to be the city manager would pick someone, that person's going to be working on this trip, and pick someone with an expertise of working with kids in an environment like this.
Councilmember Keith?
Thank you. Alex, I just wanted to ask you, I, I know we have this two-page report, and you've mentioned in here about the cost. Do you know what the cost of the flight is approximately?
I'm actually scanning the room for Clay Curtin. I'm not seeing him here. I, I think it's approximate, it's a little bit less than $2,000, I believe, but that was what people would be paying if we were...
Just the timing, though, I will, I will mention, because we're getting closer to the date. It is above $2,000.
Right. So the tickets for this particular person would be that much more. And I don't have a specific number. That's why I asked for $3,000, thinking it's an up-to amount, just to get the person there and back.
And also for clarification, I was under the impression that Marotaki was going to be there the whole time.
That's fine. Can I just finish my questions and then everybody else can jump in afterward?
Absolutely.
If that's okay, thanks. So, I wanted to ask you also about lodging. Did you look into lodging, in case that's a burden on...
No, well, so, and again, with due respect to everyone, I think one of the unfortunate things was, I, I just spoke to Councilmember Carlton today about this, and was unaware of the, of the lodging imposition that that could, that this could create. And so, one of the things we would probably likely do is put this, if, if there was no lodging available, we would, we would put this person into a hotel then.
Right. That's, that's what I was thinking.
Right.
Okay. So, I mean, in looking at this, I think, you know, we, we discussed this at a, at a policy level about whether or not we wanted to send council people or the mayor on, to go to our Sister City. And there were concerns, what if you have a mayor who can't afford to go, because so far we all pay for our own trips? But we nixed that. We said, no, we're not going to do that. We didn't want to spend taxpayer dollars to do that. But in this situation, I do think it's important to send at least one city staff person, just because of liability issues. And I understand, you know, that there will be parents on this trip too, and, but if, if, if something went wrong, and you never want it to, and you hope that it never will, will, but this is sort of an insurance policy, I think, by sending a staff person. So I, I think it's appropriate here, and then we can take a look at this for the future, how we want to change it, if we can figure out how to get donations or contributions for, for this, as we talked about, when we talked about sending the, the mayor. It's worthwhile having more discussions, I think, at the Sister City Subcommittee. But at this late notice, I think it's important to send at least one person.
Okay.
Councilmember Klein?
Yeah, well, now that it's, we're having the conversation, will, is there a place where people can access, looking at what, what are the liability forms people have signed, release forms, so people can see it? Sure. Now that it's out there, yep.
Right. So the city attorney's office did prepare liability forms as we did last year, or two years ago as well, and they're fairly comprehensive. This is less about the liability financially, it's just more about having someone with a role of authority who can be there and make decisions on behalf of the people on a trip under the umbrella of the city of Menlo Park. And so I think the attorney's office has done a good job of helping shield us from liability, certain kind of financial liability, but this is sort of going, an, an additional step.
That's fair. If, if there's a split time, then yeah, it makes all the sense in the world.
So, well, can, can I make a comment? Then I'll, so, because I tried not to weigh in, but, but now I think I, like, so, I think this is only the second time that we've done the exchange where we're sending Menlo Park teenagers to be zen. Definitely appreciate Councilmember Carlton, that on the first trip, you were there the entire time, as well as one of the committee members, Kristi Holch, from the Sister Cities Committee. This time, unfortunately, because of the, the way work and times, I, I can't be there the entire, the entire trip. And it is relatively new experience. Now, Japan isn't a particularly litigious country. It's not a, you know, big, I, I don't think there's a, a lot of exposure. But having said that, I don't think, because we're, I think as Vice Mayor Mueller said, this is a relatively young program, I, I don't think $3,000 is, is unreasonable in effect insurance to, to have someone who can speak with the authority of the city to cover that period of time. I do think, so, so I support that. Having said all that, I do think as a Sister Cities Committee going forward for the future, you know, we're not the only ones who do this, right? So other cities do cultural exchanges of students. And I'm sure there are even cities very close to us who, who, who do that with other countries. I, I think it would be good for us when we're not in a rush, you know, when we don't have a trip coming up in, in two weeks, two and a half, you know, three weeks. But in the, for the future, to find out what some of our neighboring cities have, have done on that, I think that's certainly something we can, we can find out. So I will support that. Councilmember Carlton?
I was just going to say, in the future, lesson learned. We, before we fill all of the, the slots with chaperone parents, we will ensure that either the mayor or someone will be guaranteed to be there the entire time. This is in a different circumstance than what would be the norm. So, shall we approve? Or vote, I should say?
Okay. Made a motion. Is there a second? If not, all second.
The motion passes.
All right. Let's see. We have two public hearings this evening. The first one is on the budget. So we'll have item H1. So, we'll have Administrative Services Director Nick Pegaros will make most of it, but I assume city manager Alex McIntyre, you'll do an introduction.
No clicker? Can I reach the, is it long enough? Is it just? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Alex McIntyre, city manager. I am pleased to present to you my seventh budget for the city of Menlo Park. With me tonight is Administrative Services Director Nick Pegaros, and he and I are going to tag team. I'm making this presentation for, to you in hopes of getting to a, a public hearing tonight for, so you can hear from the public. And of course, we want to hear back from the council on your reaction to our proposed budget. We're going to walk you through a, a quick budget message from myself and talk about the theme and, and some of the, the larger overarching issues in the budget. Nick will then pick up and talk more, take a deeper dive into the budget overview and provide you with some insight on where and how we got to the final outcome we did. We will walk you through some of the next steps that are anticipated, both tonight as well as in two weeks on the 19th, when we will come back and ask you to adopt all the enabling resolutions to make the budget happen. And of course, open this up tonight for questions, both from the public as well as from the So this year's budget theme is entitled "From Vision to Fruition." And this year's budget theme really acknowledges the council's steady investment in the community and in many, many of the actions and decisions made over the past several years and have led us to where we are today. And we're, one of the things we find is we are starting to reap the financial benefits by really some smart land use decisions, including things like the Hotel Nia, including things like the Park James Hotel and several other sort of major projects that are now coming, coming to fruition and starting to provide financial rewards. This is a new norm, a new fiscal norm for the city, where we're going to have more robust revenues coming in to really pay for some of the really important city services that both the council expects as well as the community. But with, there's always a caution, and the caution is that I would want you to continue to be mindful of exercising continued fiscal prudence in light of the fact that we have a many unfunded capital needs that still need attention, and, and the community is expecting that we will be implementing soon. So the 2018-19 budget funds the council's work plan. You will recall the council adopted its work plan in February of 2018. It complies with all the budget principles that the council also affirmed at the same time. It maintains basic essential services. It enhances services in certain areas. It augments staff by an additional nine and a quarter positions. It transfers, and this is very important, 3.5 million additional dollars above the $3 million we typically transfer to the general capital fund. If you hear nothing else tonight, I've said this seven times to both this council and my very first council I worked with, the budget is balanced. If you take nothing else away from tonight's conversation, your budget is balanced at the macro level and the micro level. The all-funds budget is showing 144 million in revenues offset by, excuse me, 141 million in expenditures offset by 144 million in revenues. As you go deeper, though, into the budget, the general fund tends to be the fund we focus on most, because that's where the council has the most discretion to appropriate for important services provided to the community. And that's a $67.4 million expenditure budget. There's approximately $420,000 of what we'll call operating surplus, extra monies if the council wanted to. You could, you could dedicate towards additional things that you think are important that this budget should include. And as I said earlier, and you'll hear me say many more times, it transfers 6.48 million dollars to the general capital fund. Importantly, we've had a very busy year, and I want to remind the council, some of the, the actions taken by, by your council as well as the, the staff to sort of help realize some of the, the vision of the, of the community. We have new operating agreements for the pools. We have, we have a, begun an employee engagement initiative to make us a more, a more desirable employer, employer of first choice is, is one of the issues we're promoting right now. The council dedicated Carl E. Clark Park several months ago. We have expanded hours and renovated the Bellhaven Lot Branch Library. The council just recently approved its district elections initiative. We've put shelters in Bellhaven. The council approved an herbicide-free parks expansion program going on. The council, excuse me, the, we just recently reopened, excuse me, we just recently opened the Hotel Nia, which has come online about two months ago, and that's going to start benefiting us tremendously. The Park James Hotel should be open next month. We broke ground on Station 1300. 500 El Camino Real entitlements were granted in this past year as well by the city council. Facebook 21 occupancy permits will be issued within weeks. Facebook 22 building permits have been issued, so that is making, we're making progress there. And importantly tonight, and I, it went very quiet tonight, but you approved the final steps for the Guild Theater. You, you had your second reading of the, of the, of the ordinance for the Guild Theater, and that's, that's tremendous news. Speaking of the Guild Theater, the council had prioritized six projects this year for us to focus on. I mentioned the district elections, the transportation master plan, citywide safe routes to school program, implementation of the downtown El Camino Real specific plan and biennial review, the downtown parking garage, and the Guild Theater land use approvals I just touched on. You know, interestingly, two of these are now completed. And so we've got four more to go, and we are working, and we will get these, we'll make great, great strides on all of the rest of these, these initiatives. Those were the top six, but to remind you, there are 53 more. And this budget appropriately funds all of these projects with, for the next current year. Well, you also, I had mentioned to you earlier, we had some service enhancement we were looking at as well. One of them is holiday lights in the Bellhaven neighborhood. We think that's important. Expanding the downtown sidewalk power washing program, basically making the streets cleaner more often. And this is something we can afford to do, and I think we should do. And I think the downtown merchants appreciate that, as do the shoppers. You may recall, last year, we started a hazardous tree removal in the parks, and this was a result of the drought and, and the impact it had to the trees. We're trying to go in and maintain our canopy, and this is one way of dealing with trees that are dying or, or dead. We've done a couple of library program augmentations, including more library hours, investing more in Project Read, and really trying to make the, the library the hot, one of the high points of this community. The council has heard this several times before, but we're looking to augment the staffing for the water system. We are going to create an asset management program, and this is something new for the community, for the council, for the organization, that will help us manage our assets much better. We've done some computer replacements in a variety of community centers. We are doing two major organizational reviews, and these are the last two reviews I had hoped to get done during my tenure here, and one was with the Public Works Department and one's with Community Development. And this really is sort of a best practices assessment and figuring out, how do we make ourselves even better at, at the work we do in the areas of public works and community development? And finally, another one that you may, you'll hear from the police chief, is a text to 911 opportunity. And this is the idea that we can use our cell phones to text for 911. It's pretty straightforward. So, transfer to a general capital fund. 2.98 is what the, the budget principles call for. This is a typical planned transfer that we would do each year, we've done each year. But we are, we are augmenting that with a $3.5 million addition. So again, totaling 6.48 million going into the, the general capital fund, and this is important so that we can start funding those, those unfunded capital projects. To remind you, and Nick will dig deeper in this for you, we have about a $47 million CIP, a capital improvement program with 78 projects attached to it. About 30 million are carryovers from prior years and the current year, and a 17 million more for continuing to invest in the important infrastructure here. And that covers about 27 projects. So, future CIP needs. These are projects that remain unfunded at this point. The Caltrain crossings at Ravenwood, the Bayfront Canal and Atherton Channel flood protection project, Bedwell Bayfront Park master plan implementation, downtown parking garage, information technology master plan implementation, San Francisco Creek improvements, Chrysler pump station completion, Bellhaven Library development, Dumbarton Rail, Bellhaven Aquatic Center, park playground equipment, Stanford DA for the Menlo City School District. I mean, these are basically, remain unfunded. And these are things which we will continue to strive to, to figure out, what's the priority so that we can start funding some of these programs. And really with that, in closing, before I hand it over to Nick, the budget is balanced. It's a stable, long-term financial outlook for the city that you, that Nick will explain to you here soon. We maintain and enhance services to the community, and we are saving for future capital needs. And so we're in a very good position. We will be, we are in an enviable position. And again, I think this is because of smart decisions made in the past by the council to position us, to find us where we are today. And with that, I'd like to hand it over to Nick Pegaros to, to provide the deeper dive into the budget.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Nick Pegaros. I'm the city's administrative services director, and in that role, I function as your chief financial officer. So to begin this evening, I'd like to talk a little bit about the assumptions that were used to build the budget. The budget includes, as the city manager mentioned, provisions for, to fund the city council's work plan. The initiatives that were identified for 2018 are, are funded. On that, we are, continue to experience strength and development activity, and we anticipate that carrying forward into 2018-19. We have healthy, we have healthy growth in property taxes, and we continue the city's practice of budgeting only one half of the excess ERAF funds, and I'm happy to go into what those are, should the council be interested. We have full year of the, we're assuming a full year of operation of the Hotel Nia and a partial year of the Park James Hotel. And then finally, the proposed budget includes the service level enhancements that the city manager... city manager mentioned earlier. Just to provide some context, here we have a pie chart of our revenue and other resources. The total here is $144 million, and you could see that the bulk of the revenue and resources come from taxes and charges for services. Taxes are primarily, we'll see, in the general fund, property taxes, TOT, et cetera, and we'll go into that in a bit. But the other thing I'd like to point out here is the use of assigned fund balance, and this is the reappropriation of carryover funds for our capital project. Comparing that to the general fund, which is a component of all funds, we have taxes at 41 million, charges for services. One thing that I would like to point out here is that this incorporates increases that resulted from the master fee schedule approval the council provided several meetings ago. On the expenditures and other requirements at all funds, $144 million, you'll see that salaries and fringe benefits are two of the larger components combined. You'll also see here project carryover. So these are carryover expenditures that were offset by the use of assigned fund balance on the resource side. For the general fund, we see again the salaries and fringe benefits component. I would also like to point out here that the transfers out and other of 7.45 million is inclusive of the recommendation or the proposal to increase transfer to general capital by 3.5 million. To help the council with the major revenue assumptions, I'd like to go through a couple of slides of our major revenues just to show the trends and some of the assumptions that have been made. Here you have a presentation of the city's general fund property taxes. You'll see the general growth or general increase forward. One thing that I would like to note is that in all years prior to the last bar on the far right, which is the proposed budget, includes 100% of excess ERAF. However, in the last bar, we only have 50% of excess ERAF, and this is consistent with past practice. The overall increase in assessed value when the budget was prepared, as you may know, we start working on the budget very early in the year, and the numbers are for the most part finalized towards the end of April. We assumed, based on information from the county comptroller's office, that the assessed value would increase 6.5%. I checked just before this meeting, and I don't quite believe the number, so I'm a little reluctant sharing, but it's 12.34% is the updated number from the county assessor. And we will, before we recommend any changes or decisions on the council's part, we will clarify that's not an error, but it is consistent with past growth of assessed value here in Menlo Park. This is really where the revenue changes structurally for the city. You'll see here in the chart that the 2018-19 transient occupancy tax or hotel taxes increased sharply. This is the addition of the Hotel Nia for a full year, as well as a partial year of the Park James. We made the best assumptions based on information available in the fiscal impact analysis for the hotels, as well as just some updated data available. For the general, the third largest revenue source in the general fund are sales taxes, and this has been an area of concern by the council in the past. As you can see, the history of the car dealers and the significant sales tax generation that those provided have pretty much fallen off of the historical chart, and you'll note that the sales tax, for the most part, is flat. We're continuing to hold sales tax, and we're not projecting any increase, a significant increase in 2018-19. So those are our major revenues. I'll now move into, on the expenditure side, our major expenditures. Here we have a chart of our salary and wages, and one thing I'd like to share here, similar to an earlier chart I showed with property taxes, we really need to look at the last bar on this chart with a slightly different perspective in the sense that it represents a budget number, whereas all the prior, whereas all the prior and previous bars represent actuals or estimated actuals. The reason this is important is the 2018-19 proposed budget includes a vacancy factor of 4.2%. So we anticipate that over the course of the fiscal year, we will not fill 4.2% of the authorized positions that are paid for in the general fund. In the current fiscal year, the vacancy rate was significantly higher, so we saw, that's one explanation for the increase that we see year over year. The other factor to consider in the 2018 proposed budget is that it does include the proposed nine and a quarter full-time equivalent personnel, with the exception of the water personnel who are paid for by the water fund, but it does include seven and a quarter personnel. On the benefits side, the city's benefits are broken up into three pieces, the two largest being PERS costs and the health insurance. As you can see, the PERS cost, which is an area of concern the council has kept on the radar for and is in the budget principles, continues to increase, and we, in the 10-year forecast, we continue to increase that to reflect the information that's been provided to us by CalPERS. One thing I do want to note, however, is that the city's position relative to increases in costs and CalPERS is somewhat offset by the agreements that we have with our labor units to share 50/50 the increase in costs. So this is, what you see here is net of the cost-sharing agreement. And then finally, on the expenditure side or on the use of resources, we have our general fund transfer. And here you'll see a history of general fund transfers that are quite choppy by all measures when we look, especially in comparison to the previous charts that I had shown. One thing that I would highlight is that the spikes that you see there in 2012, 13, 2015, 16, as well as the higher-than-average, I would say, for the other years, reflects the city council taking action at the end of the year to provide pre-funding for specific capital projects. And I believe in 2012, 13, that was the payoff of the side fund that was the use there. So now moving into the 10-year forecast for the general fund, I'd like to update the council that this year, we used a, we worked very closely with the finance audit committee to arrive at a model that met both the committee and staff's needs by way of looking at the city's fiscal future. We implemented the use of a forecast modeling, and we ran over 1,000 trials to arrive at what we believe to be the most likely scenario of the 10-year forecast. Key elements in the forecast, we're estimating, as always, and as we have in prior years, I should say, that there is likely to be an economic downturn in year four or five. We will see an overall decline in the rate of growth on revenue, so we're not, we don't expect that we will continue to see the 12% increases in property taxes or even the 8% increases in property taxes. The 10-year forecast on the expenditure side includes the new budget requests, and we, at the end of the day, I think one of the most important factors here is that through the 10-year forecast, the city maintains reserves equal to or over 60% of the operating budget, which is, to use the city manager's word, a very enviable position for municipality. So just on the highest level, the operating revenues here are the light bar, and the operating expenditures are the darker bar. You'll see that over the 10-year forecast, that revenues exceed expenditures. What this results in is an annual surplus, and you'll see next year, fiscal year 2018-19, we have a surplus of $420,000. That increases, and then it decreases as we begin to experience the effects of recession and then the recovery in the out years. To help the council gain confidence in the model, we provided here the trend line for major assumptions on the revenue side. You'll see the top line is our property tax assumption. The current model begins at 6.5% for the current year and declines to 4.22%, going back to my earlier comment that the major revenue trends are declining in the forecast. On the TOT side, or the hotel taxes side, which is the middle line, we see it starting at 3% and diminishing to about 2%. And then finally, on charges for services, we see nominal growth. One of the things that I would like to point out on this chart is the dip that you'll see there, starting in 2021, '22 and going through 2024, '25. This is the impact of the recession or an economic downturn on the city's major revenue New this year, I'd like to give the council some perspective of the 10-year forecast as it has been presented to you in the past. What I have done here is I've looked at the forecast presented to the council in the 2014-15 budget. You'll note that the, and this is just looking at revenues, you'll note that the revenues in 2014-15 were estimated for the general fund at 46.48 million, and in 2022-23, 54.45. If we add to that our actuals, so this is actually where we end or where we expect to end the year, you'll see that our forecasts have been very conservative. And if you add additionally the new forecast, you'll see the significant change that we are experiencing. I think the single largest element here is the greater certainty that we have relative to the Hotel Nia. It was known at the time that the hotel approvals and entitlements were there. The issue was when will it actually open? Now that it's open, we can begin to look at that revenue, which again addresses certainty or introduces certainty to the model. The other key element is that we have multi-year labor agreements with our major unions, which again also introduces some level of certainty on the major expenditure side. So with that, that was the overview of the general fund finances and highest level expenditures. I'm going to go now into the department budgets, starting with public works. The public works budget total for all funds is 76.55 million. About 12 million of that is paid for by the general fund. The balance is paid for by other, primarily capital funds, but other operating funds such as the water fund. The department proposed budget includes 70 full-time equivalent personnel, and that includes three new personnel, one construction inspector and two water division personnel. The construction inspector is needed to maintain and monitor the increased activity in the construction within the public right-of-way. I think it's important to note here that the costs for this particular position are offset by development fees that are recovered, and most definitely with the increase to fees as approved by the master fee schedule, that is the case. And then two water division personnel, and this is meant to meet industry standards for the systems maintenance. These positions are funded through the water rates, which are only paid by water customers, which does not affect customers of the Cal Water or any of the other water systems, just the Menlo Park water system. With regard to police, the total budget is 19.9 million. Almost all of it is paid for through the general fund. The police have 77 and a half full-time equivalent personnel proposed in the budget. That includes one and a half new employees, I apologize, one and a half new employees. The request there is for one code enforcement officer, and this is to address open and backlog complaints that the department is experiencing. It also allows the department's code enforcement initiatives to be more proactive versus reactive. On the communications dispatcher side, the request is to convert a current part-time employee, so a position that's budgeted at 20 hours per week, increase that to a position budgeted at 40 hours a week. We've experienced some challenges recruiting folks for that position, and you'll see here that the total cost for that would be an additional $61,000 to support additional B4 needs as well as the text to 911. On community services, we see here that the total budget there is $9.8 million with 52.25 full-time equivalent personnel. This is fully funded by the general fund. However, it's important to keep in mind that at least two-thirds of the overall budget is offset by user fees that are collected by the department for services. This does include, the full-time equivalent personnel does include the addition of three-quarters gymnastic instructor. This would allow the department to take three positions that are currently budgeted at 30 hours per week and increase that to 40 hours per week. So we would make, we would take three part-time positions, or three-quarter time positions, and convert those to full-time positions. This is identified as a need due to the demand for services in the program, as well as the ability to recruit and retain personnel to fill those vacancies. On the community development side, you'll see there is no increase in personnel. The bulk of their budget is paid for by the general fund. However, this particular department has the highest cost recovery level of any department. It's near 100, if not at 100, depending on which division you're looking at. One important element here is while the community development department is not asking for new full-time equivalent personnel, I do want to highlight that the department is asking for $225,000 of contracted personnel to augment their ability to provide services both in building and planning. In the library budget, the library budget incorporates a shift to a new staffing model that would add three full-time equivalent personnel, bringing it to 18.5 personnel in the proposed budget. The recommendation to shift the operational model is a result of the operational administrative review that was conducted by a consultant several years ago, which highlighted the challenges of operating a program and providing services to the community with a heavy reliance on temporary personnel. And so the recommendation is to add two full-time librarians. This would allow the department to develop programs and services at both the main and the branch libraries to meet the needs of the community. In addition, one library assistant to improve frontline services. One important element to consider in this particular proposal is that with the addition of a full-time personnel, there is a reduction in temporary personnel. And so there is, the impact of this budget, of this request, does have that factored And then finally, the catch-all administration/support departments. This includes the administrative services department, city council, city manager, city attorney, as well as non-departmental. This, across all funds, totals, these departments total $22 million, 38 full-time equivalent personnel, and we are, the proposed budget does include one new personnel. This would be a human resources technician, would help and assist the department or the division in meeting the demand for human resources services, both on the recruitment side as well as the training and risk management. Additionally, we are in the middle of implementing a human resources information system, and this position would assist with that. And finally, the position will also assist the city manager's office with administrative tasks. So moving on to the capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan totals, as the manager mentioned, 47.22 million, a total of 78 projects. One of those projects to the right there that you see is the emergency wells, and then the project just below that is the Chrysler pump station. Included in this year's budget is the carryover of almost $30 million plus funding for new projects. Major project funding in 2018-19 is the street resurfacing project of $4.2 million. This is primarily funded by impact fees as well as special earmarked state revenues. Over the next two to five years, we anticipate the need of an additional $15.2 million. The majority of that offset by impact fees. However, I do want to note that included in that financing plan is SB 1, the measure that may be at risk this upcoming November of being repealed, that increased the gas tax to help fund local roads and streets. streets. So if that, if that measure does go away, we may need to relook at our long-term resurfacing project. In addition, the budget, the budget includes for this fiscal year, 1.1 million dollars for the study and partial design of the Middle Avenue Caltrin Crossing Study. To bring this project to fruition, we're, it would require an additional 9.9 million. And there is a revenue in part provided by Stanford for this project. However, there is likely to be either a need through, to either, a need for funds from either the city or grants in order to meet the funding needs. Pierce Road Sidewalk and Samatao Drive bike route installation, 1.01 million. Aquatic Center Maintenance, $400,000. This is, this is a reflection of the age of the facility and the need to keep the facility operational, update, update key systems. And you'll see that each of the next five years, we need 400, or each of, yes, each of the next five years, we need 400,000, each of the next four years, we need 500,000. And then finally, some other projects that'll just move, move through quickly here. So now with that, I'm...
Can I just ask you a question on that one slide? And I'm sorry, I know you've got a flow here, but the, in parentheses, the numbers, that's what's in the CIP in the budget for the next five years. But the bullet points underneath that talk about the total project cost, and that's not in the CIP, correct?
So for, for clarification, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, what's in the brackets reflects the appropriation request or proposal for 2018-19 only. And then the numbers below reflect the needs in years two through five in the CIP plan.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll pass it back to the city manager for next steps and wrap up.
Thank you, Nick. Just for tonight, really, the next steps is to open the public hearing, take, excuse me, questions of staff from the city council initially, a public input through a public hearing, city council discussion and city council direction, so that when we come back to you on the 19th, that budget can be teed up for complete consideration. And again, the budget's balanced. It's a stable, long-term financial outlook, maintains and enhances services to the community, saves for future capital needs, and none of this happens without all of these people working hard for the past six months to nine months, getting this document in front of you for consideration. So we are ready for questions and the public hearing, whichever your, the mayor prefers to, what order you take that in.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you to the entire team who worked on it. I, you know, we can tell that there's been a lot of work put into this and we very much appreciate it. I will now open the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2018 to 2019 budget and capital improvement plan. Do we have any speakers going once? I know the budget doesn't exactly draw a lot of, right. So, all right. So do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Summude.
And is there a second? And do we have by acclamation to close the public hearing? Nods all around. Okay. So we will, we'll close the public hearing. Let's come back up here with any questions and comments. Looking around at my colleagues here, Councilmember Klein.
Yeah. Thank you. It's a, it takes, it's a huge team sport doing a budget. So I appreciate all the effort. I'll start off with a fairly simple, just ask. It's, and it's, generally it's, it's looking at surpluses and then looking at when, you know, when the organization's in such a good place. We've made some of these investments, basically looked at, at getting larger investments for infrastructure projects, the OPEB liability for general employees in 2008 or '09, and then the, the side fund. Are there areas where we need to put more time in to think about what we could do with that, with some of the revenue that would in turn look at bringing back saved income or even, you know, by paying it now, we will actually make, save money against a higher cost and these things. And then how do we calculate that? Because I think it, it makes a lot of sense to people when you look at it from that investment perspective.
Sure. Let me take a stab and then Nick might, might dive in with some details. I think one of the issues we acknowledge and recognize is, you know, you see those bars going up and up and up, and it's not because we're, we're driving those, those costs. We are reacting to those costs. We are, we are a function of the cost of provided services in the community. Council knows we contract out as much as we possibly can. We have a lot of contract services. In fact, one of the interesting conversations in the budget document you'll find is a contingency that we're asking to be, have created to the tune of a little over, I think, $600,000. The idea there is we have a couple of service contracts and one of them is, for example, street sweeping. We do not sweep our own streets. We contract that service out. The contract is up. And as we suspected, we, I think we just got bids in yesterday or today, and the bids came back much bigger. I mean, we're finding the cost to provide services across the board is just getting more and more expensive. And a lot of this is a function of where we are. The Bay Area is just terribly, terribly expensive to provide services. So Councilmember Klein, I think one of, one of the interesting questions is I think the sooner we do things, we avoid this escalation in costs down the road. Acknowledging, though, we can't do everything at once. In one of the other, I think, examples that came up a couple of weeks ago on the library conversation, and I'm not trying to use the library as an example, but for the, the escalators that we found from the consultants telling us what that same, you know, library would cost us, say, five years out. And again, all this assumes that the economy is, is more or less remaining as it is. Nick, to be very clear, does not control the economy. Nick showing the downturn in the economy was him making an assumption about if it turned or what would happen. So I want to be clear, Nick does not know in 2021, the economy's taking a hit. None of us knows that. And we continue to see things like, as Nick mentioned, on the property taxes, 12%? Really?
Right.
This is unreasonable, unreal, but it's, it's accurate. I mean, whether it's 12% or 11%, the point is it's a double digit. And we still only put in 6.5% because it gets us nervous. To answer your question directly, there's a lot of things we could do today that will be cheaper today. The problem is, we've talked about this in the past, is the capacity question.
Yep. Yep.
So that's, I think that's the hard part. I think, I think one last thing I will suggest...
And to make it clear, I, I'm looking at less elective type things and more of, we have a water investment. We have a sewer investment that's going to be a big ticket item. If we put money against now, we, we save it. The elective ones are, you know, it's political. It's, it's a lot more to it than that, but...
Some of the issues I will say, well, it's just taking up water. And just to be, to be clear, I think some of the water issues we face, and the council just accepted the water master plan a couple of weeks ago, you know, it's a $90 million program over 20-plus years. $90 million is a lot of money. $90 million is cheaper today than it's going to be tomorrow. I'm not asking to go borrow $90 million, but the sooner we can move projects along, the theoretically cheaper it will be today to do so. Did you want to offer anything?
Okay. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Mueller. So first off, great job to staff. So it's very good to see not only balanced budget, but to see the revenue that we're going to see the surpluses. So very appreciative of that. I actually just wanted to comment earlier this year, there were projects that we said we'd talk about during the budget discussion. So I want to make sure I raise them now to make sure they get talked about. So the first was Sharon Road sidewalks, and we did that during council goal setting. And the thing was, you guys said if we went and talked to the residents, that we would get that into this year's priority list. I talked to the residents. I had them sign documents, 90% of them of whom I've talked to, and have said they support the exploration of sidewalks with the city. One whole side of Sharon Road is unanimous, but for one house who I can't talk to because it's being remodeled, but I'm told it's, the owners don't live in it. It's a rental. So, so that's very good news. The other side frankly had one person object. One person said they're a renter, so they don't, they don't really have an opinion. One, I can't get in because the gate's always closed. And two, I'm pretty sure are renters because they don't want to talk to me at all. But 90% of those who I've talked to have said they actually, I had one couple who had lived there for 40 years, and they got emotional, saying, "We've been waiting forever for this sidewalk." So I'm going to provide these to the city with the hope that we can get those sidewalks on Sharon funded and the project moving forward. The next one is the $1 million transfer to make up the MPCSD shortfall. So to remind everybody, when Peter and I negotiated that with Stanford, MPCSD wanted 2.5 million. We were able to negotiate 1.5 million that night at council when it was discussed. I believe it was Kat and I said we wanted to make up the 1 million. Folks said, "We'll come back and look at it later." It was raised again earlier this year when we were talking about the ERAF surplus that was projected. Now that we see a budget increase, and it's budget time, when we said we'd talk about it, really want to make that 1 million. And we can do that, the way that's going to work would have to work, because the city can't give a million dollars directly to the school district, is that Stanford would have to increase theirs by 2.5 million, and the city then would take on an extra million for the tunnel. I believe if we do it that way, we're not giving a gift, we're not giving a gift to the school district, but all of it balances out. And we can set aside that 1 million at present value, such to avoid the escalators issue and actually save money on what we would have to pay later if we waited. The other project that we said we would talk about in budget season this year was the Hawk Crossing. So I want to raise that again now. I supported it the last time it came before us. I think it's an important project to get crids across Middle. And I think when we, when we see Greenheart come on, we're going to see more traffic on Middle. I'm sorry, not Middle. Jeez.
What? Middlefield.
Middlefield. Thank you. And then the final is the parking garage, which is a council goal this year. It's going to be a significant amount of money to do that. So I hate to say it, we're eating up a lot, obviously, of surplus there, but those are all projects that I think are pretty, pretty important. Three of those are focused frankly at kids and safe routes to school, which we'll be talking about later tonight. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to, I'll go ahead and ask some, some questions and make some comments. So where to start? I guess let's start at the 2018-19 general fund budget, whether it's, I know in the staff report, that's, that's table one, but I think you probably have a slide on it. But to summarize, when I, when I look at that, and, and again, you know, my, I commend you for all of the, I think reasonable assumptions that you've made about what it's going to look like this, this coming fiscal year. And, and you're taking into account the additional expenditures required for, whether it's transitioning some of the staff from temps to full-time, some of the other. We're still able to add 3.5 million into the, what is usually a 3 million capital transfer, which helps fund infrastructure projects. I associate a lot of that to the, the, the new hotels that are coming online, and I think that's, that's a benefit, you know, that, that we've seen. So I think, I, so as I look at that, I certainly think that while we're not going to decide as part of the budget, the 3.5 million additional should be dedicated to infrastructure projects. I've always looked at the Hotel Nia as a, as a portion of that hotel taxes, particularly because it was, it's now over and above what had been in the original fiscal, fiscal impact analysis back in 2009, 2010, is quite a bit higher because of the room rates. I do think if there's a way that we can look at taking a portion of that Hotel Nia, Hotel taxes that come in and start to build a fund toward the Bell Haven Library, I think that would be a good long-term project to, to start funding. You know, we hear that a lot. We, well, we have options for potentially the main library with a, with a generous donor. The, the fact of the matter is, I think, to get us started on the Bell Haven Library with dedicating some proportion of the Hotel Nia, I think makes some sense. The, I think originally, as part of the Measure T 2010 and, and the Bohannon Development, there was a recognition that, that the Bell Haven neighborhood would potentially see some benefit from that. I think, I think it would make sense. This, of course, was before the general plan. So how to do that, again, it's not part of this budget, but, but I'll throw out, for example, if we could set aside, you know, a million and a half or 2 million a year from the Hotel Nia property taxes, assuming, I mean, hotel taxes, assuming those room rates and continue to, to be where they are, we would have in five years a pretty good amount that we'd need for, for the Bell Haven Library. Similarly, I'm looking at the, thinking about the Park James, and the fiscal impact analysis for the downtown specific plan talked about that the, there would be a hotel, and that hotel taxes in effect would fund one of the key benefits would be a downtown parking garage. So I think here again, the TOT coming from the Park James Hotel, I think it makes some sense to have that start funding along with, for example, the development agreement that we negotiated with Station 1500, some of that to help seating a downtown parking garage. That's been a key need. It's obviously one of our top six priorities this year. And let's start looking at how we can fund the downtown parking garage. So those are sort of two, two suggestions that are coming out of just this 2018-2019 budget. I do concur with Vice Mayor Mueller that it would be good with the ERAF savings that we've seen, particularly this current fiscal year that we're just ending, that there may be a way in which we can start that process, however it's done, to address the school district shortfall on the, regarding the property taxes and the, and the foundation. Not saying it has to be done immediately, but let's start kind of getting this into a, a plan, whether it's with Stanford or not, but, but it seems to be some resources there. Now, let me shift gears to the 10-year forecast. So again, I'd like to commend the team. I see both Dan and Brandon back there behind Nick, and I know, had the pleasure of working with them as putting together the 10-year forecast. So the 10-year forecast, I, we've still built in not a deep recession, but a, you know, sort of a soft, soft landing recession. I thought prior to today, 6.5% was pretty aggressive until I heard you mention that it might be 12%. But the fact that it declines the increases to 4%, I think, I think that's, that's good. It does show on the expenses side, which I want to highlight because I'm not sure, I heard it in the presentation, but you have factored in all of the anticipated PERS rate increases for the next six years in that forecast. That is in there. So as we all know, the PERS rates are going up. It's affecting a lot of cities. The fact that we have a, a, a good property tax environment, I think, means that we will, we can cover that. Having said, said all that, I do know that, as we've talked about in the finance audit committee, that forecast does not include the fiscal impact analysis benefits coming from the general plan, which is the general plan update. That will be a few, that will be an analysis that we'll be doing over the course of the summer, correct?
Correct. Correct, Mr. Mayor. The, the 10-year forecast indeed includes all of the PERS increase... The 10-year forecast indeed includes all of the PERS increases anticipated over the next five years. For perspective, when PERS decreased the discount rate and made some change, assumption changes, other assumption changes, the PERS costs for local agencies across the state, for the most part doubled over the period through 2025, 2425. So that doubling of costs is included and factored into the forecast. Relative to the impact of fiscal, the fiscal impact analysis for the Connect Menlo process, we gave it a good try to get that factored in this year. However, the fiscal impact analysis makes a number of assumptions relative to timing, when things would get built, et cetera, that we need to focus a little more attention on that before we feel comfortable adding that to the fiscal impact analysis. And I do want to add that the Connect Menlo process has increased revenue assumptions, but also increased expenditure assumptions to offset the impact of the greater demand on services.
That's right. And I know in the current budget, we do have the, we do have some of that, for example, the additional police coverage required, the additional beat coverage, I think, is in there. And we have to unwind and kind of figure out all of that to model in. But the reason why I mention that to my, you know, for my colleagues' benefit is that I think it would be desirable for us to put together essentially a strategic financing plan based on that, where we, because I think what we've heard is, you know, we have, we have in the CIP some amount of the, these projects basically scheduled out over the next five years, but there's still a significant portion, and I think, I believe that was something like 40 million or something like that, that isn't funded. And this doesn't include the big-ticket projects that haven't gotten to the point of being able to be quantified enough with certainty to put in. So whether it's libraries or dumb Barton rail or many of the other major big-ticket items that we have been talking about that are going to be key improvements for the city, that's not been, you know, we got to figure out how to do that. And I think to your point, City Manager McIntyre, that the sooner we can come up with that strategic plan and figure out, all right, as the general plan starts generating higher property taxes, as there is a public benefit figure that was talked about, a model that was talked about in the general plan, as we calculate that, as that starts to kick in, there may be a way to be able to address some of these big infrastructure items. And I think the sooner we arrive on a, this is sort of a once-in-a-lifetime to be able to kind of do this. This is a unique economy. We're obviously seeing upside benefits from, you know, from, meaning higher property taxes, higher, you know, revenues. But what I, my long way of getting to is rather than doing ad hoc, okay, we got this, let's do this project, let's do that, I think it would behoove us to have an actual long-term strategic financing plan that says, this is how we're going to fund the library, this is how we're going to fund the parking garage, this is how we're going to fund the grade separation, this is how we're going to fund the pedestrian tunnel at Middle, this is how we're going to fund the Bell Haven Library, this is how we're going to fund, you know,
To the best of our knowledge.
To the best of our knowledge, right. That's exactly right. We don't have the crystal ball, but I know there's a lot of great thinking that's been done by staff to talk about whether it's grant sources or for some of these things, and we need to compile that. So while that's not part of this budget, and again, I commend you for all the work in the budget, I'm just saying our work is just starting in terms of, you know, and I think the time is now to do that over the course of this summer, I think would be great to be able to come back in the fall and be able to say we've identified some of those potential sources. So I think that was it. I apologize for being on the soapbox, financial soapbox, but I am excited about the prospects for the city and which is, which is sort of the story to me that's coming out of the budget and the numbers. And I think it's an opportunity for us to finally figure out how to pay for some of these big projects that we think will improve the quality of life here in Menlo Park. So that's it, sorry. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Keith.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor Talkie. City Manager McIntyre, would you mind putting up From Vision to Fruition, that's sort of last slide that you had? I just think it's a great slide. Nick can. And, you know, once again, looking at the budget for Menlo Park, I feel like, wow, we are a very fortunate city. And thank you to everybody on staff who helped put this together and to our city manager and to all of us up here who work hard on making sure that we have a balanced budget with you. And the other thing, and just making sure that, Menlo Park has a AAA bond rating.
That is correct.
And we have for years now, in spite of the recession and other things. And I don't, sometimes it doesn't sound really that interesting, but it's really a big deal. And not every city in California has a AAA bond rating, and it's special to have. So thank you to everybody for all the hard work we do to make that happen. And I just, I love your last slide here, focusing on the fact that we have a balanced budget, stable long-term financial outlook, maintains and enhances services to the community. This is a great message, and the numbers show it. So just looking into some things, I would, you know, looking at some of the 10-year forecasts, just thinking about, some of us have been on council now since 2010, and looking at your slides to see the graphs from 2010 to now, it's just shocking in a very positive way. And I really like in the model on the 10-year forecast that you did put in the recession, looking at a downturn, because every year when we do this, I keep thinking, hmm, you know, it is cyclical, it's going to happen. I don't, can't predict exactly when, but I think it's important, and we always do talk about it, and you've modeled it in here, and that's really important. We do have major, major projects that are unfunded, as you noted, Mr. McIntyre, in the very beginning of your presentation. And I like the idea of, and we have a lot of extra money right now that could be utilized towards some of these big, big projects, and I like that idea, too. I think it is a good idea to put some of this money away for our Bell Haven branch library, also just to show that we are, you know, committed to doing this, and even though we have been offered money for the main branch, that we also are putting money away for our Bell Haven branch. And then we'll keep working with our community on fundraising and how we're going to pay for these things. I ultimately think that with the library issues, you know, we probably will need some sort of bond. And fortunately, we do have AAA bond rating, which means that we can borrow money at a lower rate. And right now, Nick, would you mind just telling us what the bond rates are right now? If you happen to-
I'm sorry, I do not know.
That's all right.
The answer to that-
That's all right. So that's something to keep in mind, though. Now, one of the things, I'm glad that you've also increased, I want to talk about downtown a little bit, the funding for cleaning the sidewalks. And I know we were in a drought for years, and so sidewalk cleaning with water was not something that was looked upon in a favorable light, really, and we had to figure out how to use recycled water to do it, which we did. So now I'm glad to see that our contract with Gachina is increasing that. I think it's eight times a year now, which I would like, I'd like to see it once a month. And so if it could be increased, and I know you've planned for it this way for perhaps rain, if we get some, but I've heard many concerns downtown about the cleanliness. And I know, you know, our Chamber Executive Director is here, Fran, and in talking to many of the business owners downtown, hearing their concerns about wanting to see the sidewalks clean more often. So I know we've got it in there, but I think it should be a little bit more as well. And then in looking at downtown, I would love to see some more different things that we can do to help improve downtown in a way that does not create more staff inconvenience, I guess I could say, or staff time. And one of those things is looking at waiving fees, waiving permit fees for different things. And I've talked to Fran about this a little bit, but looking at ways that we, as a city, could encourage our businesses to do things, you know, such as sign improvements or facade improvements by waiving the fees. And so I'd like to explore that. I don't know if we would want to form a subcommittee to work with Fran to develop these ideas for the city, but looking at things that we can do to help our downtown. The other thing is the cleanliness, and we have got a homelessness issue right now. And we've had it, but I think it would be a good idea to figure out how to do some things for the homeless downtown, and I think our business owners would like us to do something as well. So if it is putting in some sort of porta potty situation that we've talked about, I know Fran's brought this up, doing that, again, more street cleaning, perhaps looking at some sort of way to help our homeless have lockers or a place where they could lock their belongings up during the day in a safe place and then have access to them in the evening, but looking at ways to help the homeless and help our businesses downtown at the same time. And I know I emailed to you a city day storage pilot program that is outside, out of Portland, that is, you know, there are many models to look at, but I think we, it would behoove us to look at how to address this issue for the downtown. Fran's got lots of photographs that she can supply showing issues that need to be addressed, and a lot of them are the cleanliness issues. So I would like to see us use some of this to, some of this money to figure out how to address those issues downtown while we can. I am interested also in using some of this funding for the schools, but I need to understand more about the financing. And I've talked to you, Alex, about this a couple of times, and it's a very complicated way that the money is calculated for the schools and how it's come, how it calculates out. So I think for me, I'd love a staff report that explains all that so that I understand how this, how the money is spent, and if it should be going to other places as well, I just don't know. But I want to, I want to understand more about the school finances and how that works.
Just as a follow-up question on that, you're talking about the ERAF?
Yeah, but I am talking about that.
Okay.
And, but understanding the school finance portion, how that is, how that works and how that's calculated.
Okay.
What? Yeah, exactly. Thank you, as, I don't know if you heard that, but the impact fees and things like that, to understand that. So those are some of the things, and I don't know, you know, if we could, if we need to form, I know we have about 420,000, and I'm not suggesting to spend it all, but I think we should work with the chamber and figure out some things that we can do to improve our downtown with this. One of the other things we talked about when we did the general, the specific plan for downtown was having hanging flower pots, and how beautiful that is and how it enhances a street. And we plumb, we have the water, we made sure we plumb for that, right, Mr. McIntyre?
Yes.
Okay, so that's there. And, you know, summer's here again, and if there are ways that we can beautify downtown, I think that would be fabulous, and get some, get some of those ideas that we had in our specific plan, start using them, doing them. We tried to do the Paca Park, that didn't quite work. Let's move on to do, you know, the hanging flower pots, and I think that would probably have a much better reception at this point. So I'd like to see us do some things like that. And I don't know, through the mayor, if you think we should form a subcommittee to work with our chamber on figuring out some of these ideas. Another thing I think would be good to fund with the chamber is, and Fran brought this up, flags, you know, that you see perhaps on San Carlos and El Camino Real. And in San Carlos, the city pays for, the city gives money to the chamber to manage the program, and then it's Caltrans that issues the permits. So, I mean, that would be another great thing for downtown, because, you know, we go to other cities, our neighboring cities, and you see these beautiful flags, and it looks really nice, and it might talk about an event coming up, and so if, I think Fran is interested in that as well, but that's something else I'd like to see. So how would we do that, these ideas?
So a couple of ideas, sort of working backwards. The homelessness issue, I think probably a broader conversation at the council level to understand what kinds of investments we would want to be making with regards to aiding or helping homeless have a better level of, you know, humane comfort, I suppose, and porta potties and things like that, because the alternative, and I know Fran Dean has mentioned this to us before, is if they don't use a porta potty, they're just using Mother Nature, and that is not an attractive solution. So, you know, one of the issues would be working with the Chamber of Commerce, perhaps, to see if we could, you know, have them kind of create our capacity. In other words, we fund it and they do it. And so one of the ideas could be around, you know, the chamber, working with the downtown merchants to figure out how to go about doing all this, and we just become part of the funding arm for it, because then we're not doing the kind of work that we would need to do for the outreach and the engagement on things like this, and then the council would obviously have to make a decision to that effect. You could do that through a subcommittee to help guide the chamber, of course. The other issue would be, for what I'll call the beautification issues, candidly, it could be the same thing. I mean, we could talk to the chamber and say, what if we're the funding arm for this, and you guys, as the chamber, are the implementer and manager? And how would we do that? Again, this is all brand new for the moment, but that could be a pathway.
But also, and the fee waiving is something that-
Oh, so the fee waiving, and I think you sent me an email at 4 o'clock today. So it's a brand-new topic for me.
Although I've brought up with you an awning program that you had done in Oregon, but you said that the laws are different in California, so you can't do an awning program.
Right.
So I started looking for other ways to do this.
Right. So fee waiving, the idea here is to provide a financial incentive to the kinds of uses you would want in your downtown. And let's pretend there's a certain kind of restaurant you might want, or a certain kind of shop you might want. Do you offer a fee waiver as a means of providing an incentive to make that happen? I think those are, those are interesting ideas. I'd want to better understand how they work. I think, and I'm going to say this kind of bluntly, it's going back to the budget conversation, the fees are the least of the cost when you're dealing with, let's build out a storefront. I mean, it really, it's this whole idea of wanting to make sure, you know, their business plan is solid, they got the right people there to do the work, the community wants that kind of retail amenity in their downtown. I'm not saying these are bad ideas, I just think there's a lot of exploration to do to figure out, how would we do this? This would fall, in my mind, under Housing and Economic Development. It would really belong in that, in that sort of part of our organization, sadly, as you know.
Right.
No one, no, sorry, Mike. Well, I have one guy right now, and Clay Curtin filling in as well, to sort of keep it running. We're really more focused on the housing side right now. We will be staffing up. Megan Ravalinsky will be coming back in July, so we'll get ourselves back staffed up again as we look towards the summer. These are the kinds of things we can work with the chamber on. And one of the things the council could do through the budget process this year is set aside a pot of money and say, you know, let's set this aside, appoint a subcommittee, we'll come back to the council to say, let's release the funds, or maybe just through my authority, we can release the funds based upon certain criteria that the council's comfortable with with regards to, incentive, business incentives, homelessness issues, beautification, I think those are the three topics I think we hit on, so.
Okay, right.
I mean, that's, you're catching me a little cold, but that would be my initial response. There may be other ideas out there that I would want to look at more closely.
Okay. Well, if, I mean, what I would like to propose is maybe we do form a subcommittee, and I'd be happy to be on that subcommittee, working with Fran on this, on these issues, and bringing it back to the council after we have some working meetings. If there's anybody else that would be willing to be on that, that would be great.
So we would have to bring back the subcommittee formation at the next meeting, but if that's the interest of the council to further explore this, of course, that's a possibility.
Okay. Councilmember Carlton?
Thank you. In the interest of time, I won't repeat questions or comments, but thank you very much to my colleagues for bringing up very, very good points. Thank you very much to staff, you guys did a great job. Well done. I will add a bit on what's been said. In downtown issue, I agree, we'd like to support the beautification and enlivening downtown and all these great things. I agree that fees are one thing, but we might also look at some of the triggers. I remember at one point doing- I remember at one point doing a simple upgrade of the front can trigger, redoing the bathroom and all these other things. And that really is significant and more problematic. So when I think, Councilmember Keith is talking about fees, I think she's talking about that whole beast of what gets triggered when we look at being able to facilitate and ease the burden for the stores to be able to make an investment to make our downtown look that much better. And I'm sure we can work together to find, to identify all those ways to make it a significant support because we all want our businesses to thrive and our downtown to look good. Sidewalks, I have also heard comments about the cleanliness of the sidewalks. Just adding on better maintenance of trash cans is something else that's been brought up. In particular, trash cans in front of yogurt and other food stores because food gets thrown into the trash can, it's there for a while, it attracts bees and other things. So that's in addition to the cleanliness of the ground, also the cleanliness of the maintenance on the trash cans. I think at one point we even looked at, they have little cameras that can go in the trash cans that will identify and let us know when they're getting full. There are different things we can do to address that. Sharon Road absolutely agree with that. As we look at that, I also don't want to forget safe routes to school and bike lanes. In the past few years, I know we've had two children hit by cars who by the grace of God, the cars were going slowly enough that the kids were okay. I've, I've mentioned before, my own daughter got knocked over just crossing Monterosa. So it is a dangerous area for kids traveling to and from school or what have you. And I assume then for adults riding bicycles as well. So as we move on sidewalks, I would like to suggest that we also consider, as we go into complete streets, not only the pedestrians, but also the bicyclists as we design that. And then to Peter's point, there are a lot of funds that I'd love to see us look into. One in particular is called out in this report, which talks about Bedwell Bayfront Park Maintenance Fund, quote unquote, which does not have a dedicated revenue source to fund ongoing maintenance. By definition, this is saying it's not maintainable. We must address figuring out how we're going to fund, whether it gets rolled in with the other parks or we, it's been something that we keep saying we need to do and we really need to address it.
Right. And I think as that fund depletes, I think one of, that will sort of force our hand. I mean, really by default, the general fund will have to pick up what, what otherwise the Bedwell Bayfront Park Fund was created to do. The general fund pays for all parks in the city. In fact, the only park it doesn't pay for is Bedwell Bayfront Park because it did have its own funding mechanism. But again, it hasn't been at all, to backfill an artificial fund for the sake of Bedwell Bayfront Park doesn't make sense. It's more, let's just let it, let the funds deplete, rule it into the balance of the parks' funding programs, excuse me, and just, you know, keep doing what we're doing or enhance what we're doing, particularly based on the Bedwell Bayfront Park Master Plan, which the council has, has recently adopted, so.
Absolutely. But as we move forward with our, our, looking forward to 10-year forecast, we need to make note of the fact that this is an additional cost that we need to, to plan for. And for those that don't know the history on that, it did have a great kind of trust fund, I guess you'd say, maintenance fund. Unfortunately, there was, as with Calpers and a lot of things, there was the assumption that we were going to be earning enough interest to keep that going. And the reality is we, it's not making enough interest and it is going down. And we need to prepare for the inevitable there. And so I, just as a suggestion, I didn't see it rolled into the 10-year forecast, I just saw a note that we should do something, so it would be good to see that addressed. Whether or not you do that yourselves or whether that comes back to council for us to determine how that's addressed.
And just, just so no one misunderstands, I just want to make a statement, the Bedwell, we will continue to maintain Bedwell Bayfront Park to the degree that the, the council in the community want it maintained. Just because the fund is going away does not mean our efforts to maintain it will go away. And I understand your point, in case the audience misunderstands that somehow we're going to no longer fund the park, that is not the case.
Okay. No, no, I wasn't insisting.
No, I know, I think for the audience, I wanted to make that clear.
We can't say this is a problem and not just ignore it.
Right.
It's good to roll it in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Vice Mayor Mueller, you had as a button you wanted to follow up?
Yeah, so, and I just want to follow up to try to get consensus on some of these issues. So on the 1 million from ERAF, Peter and I dealt with the district and heard their numbers, that's probably why we're comfortable with it. Why the 2.5 million figure was appropriate, we went over that pretty much in detail with Bill and Alex and Means, the district. I'm comfortable with their numbers now based on that, but if Councilmember Keith and others on the council want to have questions about that, what I would suggest we do is actually invite the school district to make the presentation on that. They're very passionate about it. We can have them here at a city council meeting to do that. So I, I will support bringing them here in furtherance of that, of this issue, because I'd like to put it to bed. So do we have consensus to do that?
Yeah, I only have one other question on that, which is, 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 if you could just give me an idea of the, the best practices on, on impact fees, when we pay them, you know, you know, when you have projects, typically you have projected impacts and there's an income stream related to it, reserving funds, guaranteeing and putting funds aside? I mean, we should. I mean, if that's what the ask is, let's put this aside and find the mechanisms so that they know a million dollars or whatever it's going to be is going to run the cost. It's, that's not my question really, because I understand the calculations, they may, there may be difference of opinion, but mine is just the timing and the process for it has always been one for me that feels like it, it should be consistent across everything we do, otherwise we're going to create a different set of rules if we change it for everything else, so.
Right. And the city attorney can correct me, but basically when the impact fees for school districts are done, they're done by the school district, they're not done by the city. So each school district runs its own nexus analysis and then determines whatever that impact fee is going to be. So I, I don't know off the top of my head, Los Llamitas versus Mendel City versus Ravenswood versus Sequoia or Redwood City, because we actually picked them up out in the, on Haven. So I don't know the specifics of what each one of those happen to be right now and whether they've gone back. The important issue with impact fees is they're, they're, they're reserved for capital only. They're not reserved for operations. And I think what's really happening from the Mendel City School District conversation with regards to Stanford's 500 El Camino project has to do with operational impacts.
Right.
The theory has always held, I'm just going to say this as a statement, I don't, you know, that the property taxes that are generated because of the improvements, because that's property taxes going to support the operations of a school, as they do for us, those, that increment was supposed to be enough to offset the cost of the kid going to school. You'll recall because of Stanford's.
Nonprofit.
Pardon?
Educational nonprofit.
Right. So because of Stanford's ability to not pay property taxes, that was where the impact hit with regards to the operation side of the school, not necessarily the impact fees. I'm not saying we can't get all that information and it's important to know.
It's, and for me, it's just the mechanism, the timing of these, these, you know, if we have Sequoia Union High School District, right? If Facebook was in, had the permits were through.
Right.
You know, how would we be looking at getting Sequoia?
Right.
You know, so that they're flush, right?
Right.
And paid. What is the timing, what are the mechanisms, what standard?
Right. So I think all this is, is sort of part of that big analysis. And I think Councilmember Keith, I think her question generally comes from, you know, how do schools get funded? You know, how does it work in Mendel City, Sequoia and, Mendel City, Sequoia and Los Llamitas are all basic aid schools. Ravenswood is a, is a average daily attendance, I can't remember the other term, as I apologize. But so there's totally different mechanisms, totally different systems in place on how they get funded, which is why Facebook's success in Ravenswood neighborhood may move things along with regards to shifting Ravenswood from a basic aid to, excuse me, from an ADA to a basic aid school. But a lot of this stuff is really outside my purview. I don't want to pretend to be, you know, completely knowledgeable about all this.
For me, it's just timing. Like, when do you, when do you actually write a check for those impact fees?
So that's, so then what I would suggest is if we have consensus around that we will shift the extra million, because what's in play here is the DA agreement, because we can't just give a million. We have to adjust the DA agreement, upping the, the amount of money that goes to, from Stanford to the district from 1.5 million to 2.5 million. If we do that, and then the end result is, it would be coming out of our pot for the tunnel, so we would be taking on an extra million for the tunnel.
Actually, Stanford was unwilling to do that. So if we want to basically commit a million dollars, they were unwilling to take money out of the pot for the tunnel. And, and that was very clear in the negotiations in the final DA. They're basically saying, if, if we want to put a million dollars into the school district and that, that's front-loading essentially what the, it's the discounted value of the future revenue stream. We arrived at a certain number of dollars and it was a million dollars short.
I'd like to go back to Stanford. If the council's in consensus, I would like to go back to Stanford and say, we've all now looked at this, we have the extra million, we can go ahead and dedicate that million to funding the tunnel. And we can do it at a discounted, frankly, at less than a million at a discounted rate, but we'd like you to go ahead and up your, your payment to the district at 1.5. This is something that, I mean, there's a, there's a ton of support for this in the community, as we've seen through the emails we've gotten.
Well, as long as we are, it's consistent payment, just, you know, the way that we allocate the money, the way the money's allocated. I don't, I don't want to create a precedent where this is unique when we have higher need districts that may need money fast and there may be other ways to do it. I just want to make sure I understand that.
So, and we'll have a discussion.
It's not about money going, of course, I have three kids in the district.
Yeah. No, the, that's why, and we'll talk about that at a different, another date, but that's why I still want to have the discussion with you all about Ravenswood and the JPA irrespective of whether or not those schools come out in Bellhaven, because we were going to ask Palo Alto to come in and they have no schools in the district. It's just a question of, you know, but we can talk about.
For us, project to project, how we.
Right. How do we create a vehicle to do this? Because if we had a vehicle, we wouldn't have this issue. But anyway, if there's consensus that.
I actually still have questions for Mr. McIntyre.
I, I actually have other questions too. My light's still on, but, and so I am allowed to ask if we have consensus with the council.
Except everybody, I think there was, everybody interrupted me while I was asking my questions, so.
Actually, the mayor called on me, Councilmember Keith.
Yeah, I apologize. I thought you were done.
No, no.
Okay. Well, can we, so if I can, since, Ray, if you could follow, finish and then we'll go back to you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I apologize. I thought you were done.
No, that's okay.
So I'd moved over.
So do we have, do we have consensus then to go ahead and have staff bring us back in the budget, in the, in the budget that we get next week, a mechanism by which we could do this on the million ERAF transfer?
Actually, here's what I would like to suggest. I'd like to suggest staff, not, it may not be necessarily be out of the 2018-19 budget.
It may not. I just want consensus around that we're going to do it.
I hear you on it. And because it may, I don't want to, I don't want to either stall or delay, we have to accept at the next meeting, or we have to approve by the next meeting, the 2018 to 2019 budget. I do think this topic, I'd like to let staff, you know, figure out the, the best way, mechanism, come back to us with the staff report.
Okay, can I?
That gives the chance.
I understand, but we did tell folks that we would look at this during the budget process, so just as a straw poll, do we have a consensus, we're going to try to do this? That I, that we can say? I mean, I think I heard Councilmember Klein say.
And the budget process, I'd like to say includes the summer, so.
It's, it's funny, because it's, of course, you know, it's make sure every school's getting, you know, what they deserve in terms of impact fees so that they can build schools, expand and keep up with the pace that our policies are starting to create. Absolutely, it's never been any doubt. I just want to make sure we have consistent processes, since we have four districts in multiple projects.
But it's, the issue here is that you can't collect, the issue here is that because it's Stanford and it's an educational developer.
I understand, you know, there's no question about it.
It can't be consistent. I mean, it can only be consistent to how we would treat Stanford.
The timing can be consistent. The way that we create the revenue, if it becomes a passover or they move something, we take this and move it over.
It's very, it's very unique to the developer.
About getting a report, a staff report?
Yeah. Well, I, I don't want to get stuck in a, we don't have consensus game, because that, that gets us into a shallow conversation.
Well, then let's go ahead and bring, if we need to get a staff report, then let's go ahead and, should we bring the district in then to report on their numbers?
We'll have a discussion, we will have a focused discussion on this particular issue.
With the district here to report on their numbers?
With a, with a staff report.
And I'm sure.
So that's why, don't want to shoehorn it into the next one.
No, then I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next, next item.
I just have a, a follow-up on that if we're leaving that.
Well, actually, can we follow, I waited until you were done with your comments to go ahead and follow up on it. So I'd like to finish the rest of them.
I actually, I think Maritaki, when I was still having my comments, you kind of moved on for me.
Let's, Ray, do, how much more do you have?
I have three more questions. So, and there are, there are consensus comments, because, so Sharon Road sidewalks, Kat and I are in support. Do we have a third on that? So when we were.
To add it to the CIP?
Yes. Well, to, no, actually at our council goal setting meeting, we said, we added it as a priority project, if we could get consensus from the community, they wanted to move forward with it. We now have, you know, and I've submitted the signatures to Nikki, people, there's consensus on, in that neighborhood that they want to go ahead and move forward exploring this. To do that, now that would mean that we would go ahead and fund staff time to go ahead and work the community to iron out the sidewalk plan. That, we've heard from the school district, you can ask Alex, we've heard from the school, this is a major issue for the school board, it's the, they're biggest Safe Roots to School project right now for the district. So if we could, like, so if I can have a third that we can go ahead and move that along.
Okay. But I would like to interject here on that is, as we've often heard, it's often the capacity issue rather than not necessarily the funding, so.
But it was a priority that we identified at the beginning of the year.
I understand that, so I'd like to ask Alex to perhaps think about how, whether that fits in the CIP, whether that, I mean, you know, it probably can be brought into the CIP. The question is what year, when?
So this, so I can, just to provide clarity for you all. Page 146 of your budget, if you don't have the document, trust me, it's on page 146 of the budget. Sharon Road sidewalk installation, it's, it's programmed at $935,000 in the night in, in the outer year. In other words, it's not in the current year, it's, it's floating out in, which year? 1920, we would start it, in 2021, we would implement it. That's the way it's built in the CIP today, just so you know.
But, but at the council goal setting meeting, we said if we got consensus from the community, it would move into the priority list for this year. We did. And so we have it. I'm asking, can we go ahead and get it funded and move it into the priority list for this year?
If we do that, we'll have to move something out.
And I have a question.
Why? Why couldn't we just fund it and then, it might not get accomplished this year, but it's a funded project?
We can, if it's the council's will, we can, we can, we can fund the project. I think we just need to be mindful of being able to get it done and creating expectations that we can't fulfill, that's all.
I would like to just, you know, frankly, I would like to just get it funded. And if you guys don't get to it this year, because you're busy, you know, you did your best you could. But it's funded and the project is ready to move forward.
Earmark the funds.
Right.
I mean, I can get behind that, but I also want to bring the, there are some other things in the budget that are earmarked for fiscal year 1920, such as, and this is also for Safe Roots to School in Willow, Willow Park. And it's a, it's a sidewalk that's completely chewed up in the middle of the park that leads directly to Coleman Avenue. And I would also like to pre-fund this as a Safe Roots to School project. And I know that Justin has said, we don't have any staff to work on these projects, but you can pre-fund them, but there's no staff to work on them.
So, but the issue is that this project, different from that, was identified at council goal setting. We advocated for it, we got the votes for it, it was set, go out to do the work in the community, which I did, like, so I just.
Was the idea that if we got consensus, it looked like it could move, that we would project for it and commit to it?
Right, so to remind the council about the last item with Santa Cruz, and the Santa Cruz was, was the issues with some of the neighbors not being fully on board and the challenge of bringing those neighbors on board. There was lots of engagement to make that happen, including a lot of work from Councilmember Mueller, or Vice Mayor Mueller, excuse me. And, you know, one of our issues just has to do with, you know, that, that ability to gain consensus from the neighborhood. Vice Mayor Mueller walked into me today and showed me the list and I said, great, that's fantastic, that's great news. Unfortunately, it's the day that we're hearing the budget, so it's not reflected in the document, but it doesn't mean you still, these are the changes you're allowed to make, so.
And I want to be clear, the reason why I'm like, guys, let's like, do it, let's get it funded and because, and get the project, because two years from now, I don't know if I'm going to have unanimous consent on one side of the street, but for one person who doesn't live there to put the sidewalk in. Like, it's, the timing's right.
Yeah, that makes sense and I think it is important. I have concerns also when we look in the fiscal year 1920, we have a lot of projects that are programmed in there now that I think the community thinks that we'll be working on in 1920, and we have no capacity. So I think pre-funding it is, is fine, but then when we talk about actually doing the projects, I think that's where we really need to come back and chat because we have things in there that people are expecting now based on the budget that we've put out for, with capital improvement projects on it.
This is just a budget discussion. If I can get money allocated to it, I'm happy. We can talk, we can fight out later when the ground breaks and we start the project.
Yeah.
So can I get three votes to pre-fund it?
Yeah, I'm happy to help pre-fund that. And also, I'd like to ask that we do pre-fund this other sidewalk that I'm talking about too that goes directly to Coleman Avenue.
Let's come back to that, because I want to finish my question. So, the other thing was, and if, is, and I don't know if we need to have more discussion about it, but we promised that when the Hawkeye issue came up, that we would look at it during budget season. And so I remember that and I remember, you know, it's, now it's budget season and I don't, if people aren't ready for it, can we do the same thing we did? But I just want to follow up on a word that we would look at it, and so.
Would that put on the, on the CIP? Did we have a timeline on that one as well? I should, you know, I know there's a bunch of stuff on it.
The Hawk is, what we call the Hawk is in the CIP, give me a second.
Yeah, sorry, I keep calling it Hawkeye, it's Hawk.
It's the Hawk, yeah, Hawkeye is.
And I seem to remember it in the, in the CIP, but as to which year.
Because the issue there, remember, is that the fire district has said they would match cost for it, and I don't know how long that's going to last either, so.
The fire district, I agree with you, I think they have plenty of money too. If we have enough, a lot of money, trust me, I think they have a lot of money. Again, this issue has to do with my rec, so it is funded in the, on page 152 of the CIP, it's in the outer years, 19, 2019 to 23, I don't know exactly which year it's programmed for, it's $960,000 that we have, we have anticipated, set aside for in the future. The issue with the Hawk, as it's been explained to me, it's never been done in an intersection quite like that. They tend to be, they tend to do them in very clean intersections. This is an intersection that's going to be much more difficult to do, and so we're just trying to figure out with the transportation engineers, how would we do this? Has to do with, I think, is it Santa Margarita, Middlefield and sort of, sort of forms a, what would that be? I can't even think what the shape is. It's an odd intersection, let's just put it that way, and we can't find an example of it anywhere it's been done that way. We just want to make sure we don't design something that ends up being backfiring.
So that's a subs, so that's a substantive issue that would come back to us in a.
Correct.
In a meeting, in a meeting about it. So, and that's fine if that's what people want to do, I just want to follow through that said we would talk about it now that we have the money.
So if, if I can fill in the council on a couple of facts here, and I just, I just want to make sure we're all working off the same numbers. So the Hawk is about a 930, excuse me, the Hawk is a $960,000 project. Sharon Road sidewalks is $935,000 project. The, you talked about the school district and the million, so that, so you got three $1 million projects, I'm just rounding up because that's how city managers think. So we, we were expending $3 million more dollars than the budget originally asked for, but we have money set aside to do this. And the question is, do you want to take that $3.5 million and dedicate it towards these kinds of projects right now, which we can do? Totally, you know, appropriate for the council to direct us in that, that way. And we would, I would prefer to know this sooner than later if the council does know the answers, so.
Right, and so far, we've only agreed to pre-fund one of them. We're talking about two are coming back.
Correct, no, I'm giving you an order of magnitude for numbers, so you understand, because otherwise, we will, so let me offer one more scenario for you all, just to understand. We will also close out the books this year, June 30. And we're going to have an operating surplus for the current year, I want to be very clear, I'm not talking about July 1 now, I'm talking about closing the books this year. We will have monies to do that. One of the things we can do for the school district piece of this, if there's a million dollars, for example, that is requested by the council, when we come back next on, on June 19, not through the budget, but through an appropriation of the fund balance, be able to take a million dollars and at least reserve it.
Right.
Hold it, and in the summertime, we can have a grand conversation about this.
That's great.
Does that work?
That's totally fair and reasonable.
Okay.
Because we have to have the meeting on that. So the, the last item was, I just didn't, I didn't hear a third, but I know we have a third, and that was supporting, looking at, putting together the funding plan for the garage out of the surpluses. And I just want to hear that we have a third on that.
You go first, I'm the second.
All right, well, I know Peter said it, I think it's unanimous on that, but I just wanted it on the record, so there was.
And that was with respect to, that, that's obviously a longer term item.
Might not be unanimous, I don't know.
And I think they're referring to my comment about the, the Park James TOT toward that.
Yeah, I, I don't, I'm happy with any mechanism, I just had raised it, I just want to set aside money, start saving for it.
Even if it's long-term, we start it now, it finishes earlier.
Right.
So, can you restate what the request is? I want to make sure we're all hearing the request, the, on the garage, on the parking garage.
Looking at a funding, starting a funding plan toward the garage, and I, I mean, starting to identify funding streams for the, for the garage.
I think I hear, correct me if I'm wrong, you're saying putting money aside for the divine face.
Yes, I'm saying putting, starting to put money aside to start, because we're going to have costs this year.
I agree.
We're going to have costs this year, it's a priority to start that project this year.
So one of the things we could also do through the, and I don't want to get too far ahead of my finance people here, but we could through, also through the year-end close on June 19th, come back and maybe create a garage fund, and in that garage fund, we can cede some of the operating surplus from the current year.
Good.
And then figure out how we move forward with a plan to continue to build that fund. Does that make sense to everybody? And if not, please, I'll happily explain it again.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay, Councilmember Keith.
Thank you. Just along the lines about the garage, I think it would be important also, and Marotaki, you talked about this too, is setting aside and figuring out the funding for our Bellhaven branch library.
Right.
So just do the similar thing that you're talking about with the garage, with, with the Bellhaven branch library. If, if there's consensus up here to do that as well, yeah, okay, good. Yeah, I'm seeing that there's consensus to do that. Does that make sense?
No, makes total sense. Let me do that whole senatorial.
Sure, yes, go ahead.
I sense there are discussions about whether or not that can come back on the 19th, but I think, we can give them, staff, understand that you've got some latitude here.
Okay, so, because one of the things I think we can do is, is, and I'm going to state this really bluntly and make sure it's, we're hearing it right. So, with the op, the current year's operating surplus, we've sort of drifted away from the budget right now, we're talking about funding other ideas now, is to come back on June 19th with the, setting aside a million dollars for the Menlo City School, Stanford DA negotiations, not, just setting it aside, appropriating and letting it sit there, separately creating a fund that starts to cede the downtown parking garage, and is it, will the council give us the discretion to figure out how much to cede that fund with?
Yes.
Okay, we can come back with a recommendation, obviously you can change the number when you see it in two weeks. Third then, Marotaki and Councilmember Keith's comment about doing a similar idea with the Bellhaven library. Do you want to do the Bellhaven library through the current year's operating surplus or put it in next year's, the budget we're talking about today?
That, I was thinking more in the 2018 to 2019 budget as part of that capital transfer, three and a half million.
I understand. That's, I just want clarity on that, so.
I'm fine with that as well, just so that we identify.
It'll happen, the fund will be created, there's just different mechanisms for what year we're pulling the dollars from.
Because there's a tie with the Hotel Nia tax, I think makes sense, a source.
I want a clarity on that, so.
Okay, and then I just want to go back to a couple, two things really, just, is there interest in creating a subcommittee to work with the Chamber of Commerce?
We said we'd come back doing that, so.
I think there is interest in doing it, we cannot pick the subcommittee tonight, but yes, to.
Right, so will it be, come back on the next agenda, I guess?
It could, of course it could, yeah.
Okay, so that, if that can come back on the next agenda, that would be great.
And we might create a kind of a grander, a general mission statement, so the council understands what this group is, what this subcommittee is tasked with and how it works with, you know, through staff and with the chamber to figure out what it is we're talking about. I think Councilmember Keith's ideas might be the starting point and there may be more ideas out there on what the chamber, how the city and the chamber can partner on focusing on downtown and downtown enhancements.
Potentially, I'm happy to do that with you, it just kind of depends on the, the time scale that you're considering.
Yeah, good, I understand.
I'd be interested too, but, so that sort of interacts with the parking garage and everything going on with that too, so.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe, well, we'll, we'll talk about it next time. I definitely would like to be on that to work with Fran and then maybe somebody not working on the parking garage would be good, but we'll see. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up was just what I was talking about earlier, this first Safe Routes to School, this Coleman Avenue situation. We, we have the Laurel Upper Campus now and we have the Laurel Original Campus, and we have kids going back and forth between the neighborhoods crossing Willow Road. And there's a CIP project to improve this, the bike path, so that kid, we can get kids off of Gilbert and have them go to Coleman. But the, and Justin, Justin knows, I've talked to Justin about this, I don't know if he's coming forward or not. It's, it's a, in the 1920 budget cycle, but again, it's the capacity issue, they don't have the capacity, but all I'm asking is, could we pre-fund that as well? Can I get consensus?
It's it.
Yeah.
There's no capacity, but you can pre-fund.
Yes, same to Justin, correct.
We had, when we did, I think sidewalks, it was county too, we had to work with.
This part's not county, because it's just at our Willow Oaks part.
Makes it easier.
Yeah, so there's a soccer field on one side and the dog park on the other side, but there's a really crummy path to get through, it's just, could use some help. Yeah, yeah, it is. So if we could just get consensus to pre-fund and then whenever Justin can worry about that.
If I can just jump in really quickly, you know, pre-fund, again, this starts to deviate from why we do a CIP, and we try to lay out a plan for the council so that we can help you understand how we can get through the work. I will tell you, pre-funding, the two projects that will compete head to head will be the Sharon sidewalks and this project, they're identical projects. And we won't do either of them this year, but we'll have them pre-funded.
No, it's just a matter of pre-funding and that's it.
But just so you know, that's what the CIP does.
I know.
Next year.
But I'm just asking for the same.
I understand.
Consideration for this, this Safe Routes to School as well.
So my only issue is that I've never, I don't know anything really about this project. Like, we, we, we did at the, at the council goal setting, like, we really went, went over the Sharon Road project. It was on the priority list, there was like, it was like a condition precedent. So I don't have anything against this project, I just don't, I don't know what it is.
Well, I do recall that we did talk about safe routes to school, may elevating that as a high priority, and we've always talked about that Coleman to Upper Laurel as a big initial piece of that, so.
If you guys, if you guys know the project and you think it's great and there's consensus, then I'm not, then I'm fine, I just, I've never, I don't know, I don't recall seeing a staff, in my time on council, I don't recall seeing a staff report on it.
And that's right, there's more specifics, but.
So it's hard for me to pre-fund something that I've never even seen, like, I don't, I don't know what it is.
Justin, do you want to address it? You may as well.
Happy to follow up with the council members offline, but that project actually came as an idea from, when the Upper Laurel School was open, that we got, had a lot of input from the community about different improvements, and so that project's actually in the five-year CIP. That's already in the existing 1718 budget five-year CIP. So that, that one had, had been there prior to council goal setting.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Are you saying that that is budgeted for next year?
No, it's, it was, in the one-year budget, we have the four future years of CIP projects, and we've been doing that for a number of years. That project was listed in the 1718 budget as a future CIP project.
Okay, I'll second then, fine, I'm fine with it.
You know, I'll, I'll let you finish.
Essentially, what, okay, what we're doing is saying, don't come back and tell us you don't have money for this, but that's really all we're, we're saying right now, because it's going to be a resource problem, is really what we're talking about.
So all we're do, what's happening here is we are moving three and a half million additional dollars into the, into the capital improvement, the capital, general capital fund, and the 3.5 million will start to be consumed or earmarked with the Sharon Road project, the, is it Altisco, I'm totally sorry, I don't remember.
It is.
Altisco, thank you, project.
Can I ask, because I don't understand, this project is a, so the Sharon Road, one of the reasons why Sharon Road I think is super important is because it's kids walking in a road next to cars. Is there a, what's the danger component? Because what we're basically doing is, so it's two Safe Routes to School projects, okay? And we're moving them out of all of the other Safe Routes to School projects. And I understand, like, the immediacy of the Sharon Road project. I don't, I, I don't understand where this other project ranks in comparison of immediacy to all of the other Safe Routes to School projects are when we're just trying to allocate funding. So is there something, some, I'm totally out of blank, is there an interaction with cars, is there a safety issue such that I would want to move it up as compared to all of the others? Yes, there is? Okay, if there is, then great.
Yeah, yes, again, happy to kind of, and these are some of the things that we can report back on to the council if you give us some general direction this evening, but another great venue for being able to work out some of these priorities would be the transportation master plan, so putting in the plug for that again this evening. But this particular route is making a much more attractive route than kids that are currently going down Gilbert.
Yeah, let's take them off Gilbert.
And then, and then there's through a current parking lot as opposed to a dedicated route. So it's up to the council decide on the trade-offs of the pros and cons of some of those safety issues, but there's comparable issues, yeah.
Okay, so can I make a suggestion? I would like to have Councilmember Keith finish up her last questions, but rather than debating the pros and cons tonight on these, because we have another important item to hear after this, can we just make sure you log them, understand, and then come back to us with, with how that, if I may suggest.
So are you suggesting for all these things then, I mean, the two things that we're talking about, pre-funding?
We've, we've already, he's.
Yeah, so the only thing I was just asking is, can we just pre-fund this, that's it? Just, and then we, I don't even need it to come back if we just pre-fund it. And Ray said he's fine.
Well, I think we heard the answer.
Is there one more?
Actually, I would like, before we pre-fund it, I actually would like to hear, I understand the issue on Sharon Road really well, I'd like to hear from Safe Routes to School folks that this project and others, that this project rises to the level of immediacy over other Safe Routes to School projects that we would be pre-funding over.
Okay, well, since Jen Wilson's in the audience, we will let, well, actually, Jen, can we not, let's not do it tonight, but I'd like to have it offline, because I have, I know, and you've taken pictures, I've seen them. I'd love to have you send it to, but I really do want it, yes, Councilmember Klein.
When this comes back, can we, terminology has me just a little, the, pre-funding, what is, I'd like to just really clear what we're doing. Dedicating money to it, fine, dedicating, holding, reserving money, just when you come back, just one term for everything we're doing. Pre-funding doesn't sound like the right term. It sounds like a easier term, but it's really just reserving or.
Well, you're advancing the funding, you're advancing the project in the current CIP, Well, you're advancing the funding, you're advancing the project in the current CIP, we're going to take the 3.5 million and apply some of those reserves to these projects, but making it abundantly clear is unlikely we're going to get to either of these projects this year.
Right.
Okay, fair enough. Councilmember Keith, are you done?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilmember Carlton.
Safe route to school is probably the one thing that I think 99.99% of the people in Menlo Park agree on. I, I challenge anyone to come up and say they don't care about children being safe going to school, because it deals with childhood obesity, it deals with traffic, it helps so many things that we're dealing with. You know, when we talk about hiring people, I'm, I'm half inclined to suggest that we hire a full-time consultant to manage safe route to school, because I think it is such a huge issue, and it's not just education, it's actually making sure that we have the bike lanes and the actual routes outlined to make sure that kids are actually safer. Because most moms aren't going to send their kids out if they have a choice, unless they know their kids are safe. So I look forward to that coming back, I won't go into it any deeper, because I feel like it's going to come back, and then we can, we can delve. I just wanted to throw out there, I don't know if anyone else has seen it, but for those that haven't, Planning Commissioner Henry Riggs, just gratis to give us something to work with, has put together an architectural design for a, his suggestion for a parking garage. And I was just going to let everyone know that he's designed that, and it's, he has it if anyone wants to look at it, just as an idea to start with.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Klein, do you have it, your lights are on?
No.
Okay, so, I, I want to close the discussion, I don't believe we have a motion tonight, this is a hearing, we, I think you got plenty of questions, guidance, input, and we certainly look forward to, to our next meeting, when we will finalize and approve, I assume next meeting.
We have a bunch of people taking copious notes, it'll be fascinating to see what they all say. Here's what I believe you said, though, I think you hit four major points, and if there's something I missed, please, I'm not missing it intentionally, it's just trying to keep track of this. On June 19th, we're going to come back with two non-budget items related to amending the current year's budget to appropriate a million dollars for the Menlo City School District Stanford DA. We're going to create a fund for the parking garage and seed money into that from the current year's potential operating surplus. So two actions that'll, that'll be separate from the budget, but coming back on the 19th.
As well, I assume, our usual policy of reserving for the strategic pension reserve, there's a policy for?
Right, well, we, we do that when we actually close the books completely, and that's done at the end of the CAFER process, that's done in December. So moving forward into the budget, Vice Mayor Reeler's suggestion around pre-funding 900 and whatever the numbers I used earlier, roughly a million dollars for the Sharon Road sidewalks, creating a fund for the Bellhaven Library and starting to pre-fund that as well. Those are the four major capital items. Coming back with a, the suggestion for the formation of a council subcommittee that will focus on a partnership with the chamber on focusing on the downtown, and some of the major issues, beautification, homelessness, other ideas, business incentive-type ideas.
Waivers, fee waivers.
Right, business incentives, right, whatever those might be. And I think, what am I missing?
The safe routes, just overview of, Bray was asking for the Willow thing.
Right, no, so, sorry, and then, and then the last project would be the idea of the, of the pre-funding potentially for the Alma, the Altischool.
Upper Laurel.
Pathway system. And, and we can work with some of the neighborhood, the neighbors, to see how they want to contribute to defining that project as well. So, I think those are the, kind of the two, two, ones related to the budget, ones related to the year-end close, they're all financially related, to make sure we have projects moving forward and clarity around what those projects are. Right? Operationally, I'm hearing no recommendations for changes to anything from, I just want to be clear.
Correct.
Okay.
Great.
Then we're good.
Okay. All right. Oh, Hawk Crossing was another topic that we were.
It's not going to be, it's, it's coming back to us in a meeting to discuss that issue. But not next, not on the June 19th meeting? Or is there expectation of some conversation?
I don't think there's consensus for the 19th meeting, but in a short order, we'll be seeing that.
We'll bring it back.
Okay. Okay.
Are we good?
I'm.
Thank you, Council, we appreciate it.
All right. All right, next, and I, we have item H2, consider an appeal of the Planning Commission approval of a use permit for new residents at 752 Gilbert Avenue. I also want to make, while we're shifting around, a couple of, just remind folks that we will not be doing item I1 on regular business, which is the charter measure on the ballot, that that will be on the 19th agenda, so that, I'm sure that'll be a, a long evening. But, and I also want to thank everyone, I know many of you are here for this item, and that you patiently sat during the budget, but we got to get the budget done by the end of the month. So, our fiscal year ends on June 30th, you know, this is key, so thank you for sitting through that conversation, hopefully you're informed a little bit about the city's budget at the same time. All right, I'm going to turn this over to Mark Munzer, our Director of Community Development, along with Assistant Planner Michelle Morris. Good evening to you both.
Good evening, Mayor Otaki, Members of Council, Mark Munzer, Community Development Director. We will get right to the presentation, so Michelle will walk you through some slides, kind of summarizing how we got here this evening as an appeal of Planning Commission use permit approval, and then I believe we will be, there will be an opportunity for the applicant and the appellant to provide some information additionally. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and City Council members, thank you for allowing me to present to you tonight. I'm Michelle Morris, Assistant Planner with the Planning Division, and you already know my boss here, Mark Munzer, Community Development Director. Tonight, I'm presenting a summary of an appeal for a use permit approval for 752 Gilbert Avenue. The applicant, her architect and the appellant, I believe, are here tonight, and will present to you after my presentation. Let's get started. The proposed development is as follows, an application was submitted on July 26, 2017. There is a single-family, single-story home that was to be demolished, that was the proposal, to construct a two-story home, and with an attached garage. Also, as a part of the proposed development, one heritage tree, a Douglas fir, was proposed for removal. As you can see, the front elevation is one of the things that we'll be talking here tonight, considering tonight. As you can see, this is directly from the staff report from December, with the front gables, the stucco facade, some of the windows, the fenestration. The height of the house that's being proposed is also shown here as well, I'm not sure you can see in this screenshot, but it says 27 feet 3 inches for the proposed height. So on December 11th, the applicant presented their project to the Planning Commission. Public comments were made by a number of neighbors, and the Planning Commissioners heard those comments and considered them as well. Ultimately, the project was conditionally approved, 5 to 2, with Commissioners Barnes and Kale dissenting. The conditions were to reduce the building height by one foot, so it went from 27 feet 3 inches, well, 27.3 feet, to 26.3 feet. The maximum allowed height in this zoning district is 28 feet. They also were given a project-specific condition for a seven-foot-high fence on the east side of the property, and to adjust privacy concerns, the Planning Commissioners told them they needed to either change the window glass at the stairway to obscure glass, or raise the windowsill height, and also to break up the facade, of the stucco facade, the Commissioners wanted louvers or gable vents to be included. So the appeal was submitted on January 2nd, and the appeal letter, which is attached to my staff report, amongst other things, mentions comments from the neighbors regarding the proposed height, which was not adequately considered, excuse me, adequately considered. The proposed height of the new building would be abnormally large and disharmonious and out of scale, and the letter also mentioned concerns about the health and treatment of the heritage trees at the site. Ultimately, the city arborist approved the removal of the heritage-sized Douglas fir, and levied civil penalties on the homeowner for the harm of previously done to the Douglas fir, and a non-permitted removal of an additional heritage tree. So tonight, you have three options, you may deny the appeal, uphold the Planning Commission approval, you may also, instead, uphold the appeal and deny the Planning Commission approval, or uphold the appeal and make modifications to the Planning Commission approval with additional conditions. So that concludes my summary of the appeal tonight, if you have any questions, I'm right here, I'm willing to answer any questions, thank you.
Any clarification questions before we go to public comment?
Yeah, just briefly, thank you. In looking at the Planning Commission minutes, was this an argument over six inches of height? Because it looked like, at one point, the architect, I'm reading the minutes, and it looked like the architect had said, "We can take six inches off the, the top and the ceiling inside, on the two levels, and lower at 18 inches," and then there was a discussion about 12 inches versus 18 inches.
I believe the discussion was more along the lines of initially, they were going to take away two feet from the height of the house, and then they kind of seemed to compromise on 18 feet, but ultimately ended up with just one foot being reduced from the height of the house. So they were more, that discussion of the six inches was, you know, when you have vaulted ceilings, and also the second floor of the height.
I understand, I'm just, I'm looking at page 72, and it says that Mr. Spalding said they were willing, willing to reduce the overall height of the house by 18 inches, and then Commissioner Riggs asked if 12 inches was fine, and it seemed to me it ended up being a battle about 12 inches or 18 inches, and I was trying to understand that.
Yes, you're correct.
Okay, so we're talking about a battle over six inches, basically, on the height. Okay, I, I just wanted that.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing, but I, how would you propose, are we going to have a presentation first by the applicant, or, or the appellant, or, I mean, I have a list of, of speakers here, but I don't know who's on, so.
So typically, there's a presentation by the applicant first, and then the, and then the appellants have opportunity to do a presentation, and then the public hearing, and then you would call on the speakers for the public hearing.
Correct. Okay, so, so then I'd like to invite the applicant to come up and present. Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Chris Spalding, the architect. So, I don't really have a presentation, just go over a couple of quick things. What you have in your packet is the original proposal, I wish you had the revised, because we've since revised the plans, but it didn't get in there. So we've lowered the house 12 inches, we're still willing to go 18, that was fine then, it's still fine. We've changed all the second-story windows to have at least a 5'6" sill height, and the window in the stairwell is obscure glass and fixed, so it can't open. Plus the seven-foot fence, plus the decorative gable, louver vents. So, we're doing all that, and hopefully that will be enough to allow us to proceed. I'll sit down, if you have questions.
We may call you back with questions later. All right, so now I'd like to invite the appellant to come up and make a presentation.
So, thank you, first of all, thank you very much, Mayor and Councilmembers, as well as thank you to the staff for shepherding this process and helping us through this. Also, thank you to the folks in the, in the audience from the neighborhood that stayed this late. I think it's really important that, that we talk about this, because I think as Councilwoman Keith said, this, this is somewhat coming down to just a six-inch issue, and I think it's important to understand how that happened and why that happened, and some of the anger that, that we feel as a community from what happened transpired at the Planning Commission meeting. But first, I want to say that we are not against a second story, a two-story building in our house, we actually are very happy about it, and we are very happy that that property's being developed, it's been neglected for a long time, it's an ISO, it's been unkempt, and in the past year and a half, it's had some pretty sketchy renters in there that have caused a lot of commotion in the neighborhood. So, we're happy to see it, we're happy to see it developed, and we weren't happy to see heritage trees removed illegally, in fact, we had to call the police, because there was a, a group of contractors meant to go in and take out some roots, who are in there now cutting down heritage trees. Okay, so that's all been taken care of, and we can keep that off the books, but I think one of the main issues here is, as we talk about all these development issues and housing, and it's all in our mind, is how is the, how is the, the City Council, the mayor, the government, going to work with the community to address these issues, and especially the community that's affected, i.e. the people who own the houses that surround the one thing here. And I think the issue is whether you're going to allow, you know, the members of the committee, the commission, to sort of just make up, you know, arbitrary, based on their opinion or a principle, that directly contradicts what we were trying to argue for here. Okay? And so I'll take you through that, but I just want to say that, you know, the, the home, that, you know, our, our main, our main issue is that we feel that the house, it has a lot of bulk, a lot of mass, and if you look at the pictures, I think we submitted some pictures on our block, we have predominantly single-story homes that are pretty modest, and that, we feel that this, the design and the height of this house is so imposing that it's going to be extremely incongruous, it's going to be quite monolithic. Okay? So, I think a lot of things have been, have been put forward to help remedy that and mitigate that, and that's what we're saying. During the commission meeting, we did ask for a two-foot reduction, and what happened was, is that as the, the architect and the owner said, well, you know, they had, they had said we're willing to make 18 inches, some of the other council members, three of the council members were sort of on the side of, hey, they had serious concerns about the height and the, the overall massive-looking structure, and a, a motion was made, and a second was made to reduce it 18 inches, which was perfectly in line with what they're saying here. And then a very, very shocking thing happened, then the council member Riggs, or, sorry, the Commissioner Riggs, essentially said, you know, "I don't think it should be 18, I think it should be 12," negotiating directly against the, the wishes of the people, the residents, the homeowners on that street. All right, that's shocking. Like, what was he negotiating for? The benefit of Menlo Park, the benefit of the owner, who's not here anymore, but she's never lived there, she doesn't live there now, and she doesn't intend to live there. Okay? So, let's, let's back up. So, an investor comes in, buys a property, cuts down a couple trees, puts a huge, you know, massive house, the thing that the, the report did not mention was that the, the lots on that side of the street are substandard, they're 20% narrower than a standard lot, and there's a special code that allows them to build to the size of the house. Okay? So, we're talking about putting a, a large house, and, and the, the square footage is fine, I mean, I, I think everyone should maximize their square footage, but the way it's designed is it has a 27-foot, and part of the, part of the front is recessed, but not very much, and it just seemed extremely imposing, and not in the character of a neighborhood that's been there for 70 years. Okay? We have neighbors here that have lived for 24 years, 23 years, I've lived there 15 years, okay, and we've owned our houses there. So, to have a, to have the Commissioner arbitrarily, because what he said was, by principle, he doesn't think that there should be a restriction if 28, 28 feet's allowed, by principle. Okay, well, why are we even having the discussion, then? We, we talk about things like scale, we talk about design and materials, they have an opinion about it, we have an opinion about it, we can't, we negotiated an answer, but it was blown up by the, the Planning Commissioners. And that's, that's really, really disturbing to me, because for no benefit to the city, they're negotiating us, and he actually asked, he asked the, the owner, the investor, "Oh, would you be okay with 12 inches?" "Oh, yeah." "Well, okay, we'll make it 12." Not asking the citizens, the people who own the property around that, what their opinions were. So that is extremely shocking to me, and I'm trying to understand, you know, is that the way it's going to be here, where we have people who don't live in the community, who are on these things? I just find it so arrogant and patronistic that they would come in and arbitrarily, based on some, you know, notion, "Oh, no, you don't have to do that and negotiate against us." So, I, I think that this is one of the main things that I think is really important here. I also think that we need to do some mitigation to make this property and this house fit in with our neighborhood. And I think there's a number of things that can be done, one is lowering it, and I think that the, lowering it to the 18 inches that was initially proposed would be acceptable to the neighbors. I think there's some other mitigations that we can consider, in terms of the design and style, that aren't very serious. I mean, if you look at the elevation of the building, all right, if this were the front, that'd probably be okay, but that's the back, here's the front, okay? And, and they talk about a recessed thing, but it's recessed three or four feet, it's, it's part of the second story, it really looks imposing if you, if you were to see this 3D model of it. And honestly, you know, this, this is the view that I get to look at across in the street, and there's going to be a fence here, but since they're up against basically 5.5 feet, there's nothing going to be here blocking this. There used to be some bigger trees back here, they're gone now, there's nothing blocking this. To me, I mean, two chimneys, this, this to me looks like a, you know, a two-unit townhome that I would, I see in Sunnyvale when I go down to work. It, so, you know, I guess the point is, one is that I think that the, the Planning Commission completely overreached on this, and I think that needs to be remedied, but also that I think that the council, I hope the council would consider some of the changes that were proposed by some of the commissioners, to reduce the overall height of the building that were accepted by the owner and the architect, and that we can, you know, come to some agreement here, that it's a win-win-win. Thank you.
Are you Mr. Selvik?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, Eric Selvik, 717 Gilbert Avenue.
Just wanted to make sure. Just wanted to make sure. Right, great. Thank you.
Through the mayor, can we ask him any questions?
Yes, I think that, pardon? Yeah, I think you can ask questions. And I do want to mention, for those of you who will be, who have requested to speak, you will get a chance right after this. I think I do want to.
Yeah, I just had a.
We'll go to public hearing.
Thank you. Mr., it's Mr. Selnic?
Selvick.
Selvick, I wanted to make sure I said it right. Mr. Selvick, thanks for coming and speaking tonight. I just had a couple of questions for you. It sounds like you are interested in, you know, having it reduced by 18 inches, which we've heard the architect say that that would be.
Yeah, I mean, I probably prefer a little bit more. I was, I've been, we're discussing two feet.
Right.
And the negotiation was made down to 18, and I think we were all willing to walk out with that.
Yeah, and I read that in here, and it looked like it could have been, it could have been a 3-2 vote, almost, when I was reading it. There was one commissioner who sort of went back and forth on the 18 versus the 12. But, so going down to 18, and then it sounds like landscaping could help? Is there?
I think landscaping helps. So I know that part of the remedy for cutting down the trees is planting two new trees, probably one of the, and they're larger trees, so probably putting one of those in the front on the, as you face the home on the right side.
Uh-huh.
The front doesn't really have a, it has some vegetation, but it's very low, it's very weedy.
Yeah.
Something that's a little bit bigger, that kind of blocks that visage, would be very, very helpful and very welcomed. And we do have a lot of large trees in the area. We have some enormous, enormous trees, and stuff like that would fit right in.
Okay, good. Yeah, I was on the planning commission for six years, so I looked at a lot of these different things that came forward to us. And so, you know, landscaping is something that can really help, even along your fence line, which I don't know if it's been discussed, but if you need more landscaping on, on the other side, or your side, to help with the privacy issues, has that been discussed?
Yeah, actually, I don't live quite, I live across the street, and so when I say, when I kind of put this view, it's, it's sort of, it's, I'm actually across the street. So, but the residents of the neighbor are right here, and they would probably be very happy to talk about some other things, because it is, if you see the difference there, it's quite, it's quite a.
Yeah, oftentimes, on these kind of issues, when they come forward, we'll ask the builder to work with the neighbors to develop a landscaping plan, and that's not, that's usually not a problem for anybody. And that way, you can have some more privacy when this two-story goes up.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other thing you mentioned was the second floor, you were talking about it being forward more instead of back.
Yeah, it's, it's.
I can see, I think I'd have to ask the architect about that, but I just, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
It seems that could be shifted back a little bit to, to make some relief there, so.
That's something we can ask the architect after the other speakers.
Perfect.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Selvick. All right, so now, we'll go to the, the other speakers. Sony Bergman, followed by David Lehman.
Hi, I'm Sony Bergman, and I'm at 716 Gilbert Avenue, and I sent some digital photos of the block, and it's 12 homes, and a few of the residents are here tonight, and I just wanted you guys to see the.
This is correct.
That's it, yeah. And I sent some color pictures, too, I think, through the computer. Just the relativity of, and proportion of the homes, and compare them to each other, and I also sent a picture of 269 Santa Margarita, which has a home that was rebuilt, and kind of set back from the street. So I thought that was important to see, I thought that looked okay. So David and I live at 716, we're three doors down from where the home is being built. We've been there for 23 years. We love our neighborhood. I'm aware of growth and development of this area, and the changes going on. I see it riding my bike and walking around town. Many homes are being remodeled and newly built. The size of this home is going to be on 50, is 5,450 square foot lot, and it seems like the size of the house is going to be maxing out that, that lot. Our concern is the scale of the house in proportion with the land, which is a substandard lot. The new homes nearby are built on larger lots. We do not want the building to look like a massive structure, being the one and only home in our 12-home block section of Gilbert, looking so large and out of place. In addition, I know that the owners and developers were fined for cutting heritage trees down without a permit. I feel, I do not trust the motives of the developers, and that gets, and that doesn't serve us in the neighborhood. We want this new home to be built with some integrity and thought to our neighborhood. The proposal states that the scale and style of the proposed residence are compatible with the neighborhood, and I wondered if any of, if the, if any of you have seen our little neighborhood, and we hope that you might come by and see it, and thank you for listening to, and we hope you hear us.
Thank you very much. David Lehman, followed by Crystal Wong.
Good evening. My name's David Lehman, I also live at 716 Gilbert. 23 years ago, Sony and I bought our home, and of course, at that time, we were the newest people on the block, and now, there's only one homeowner on the block that's been there longer than we have. We welcome changes, and, but we hope to have some influence on the changes, to help preserve the things we value about our neighborhood and about living in Menlo Park. This, I looked at the plans and the elevations on this house, it seems like the full height of it is, is very close to the, the front setback, and, and it seems that there would be ways to mitigate that. For one thing, the, the whole second story could be moved, as Eric said, could be moved to the back, instead of being so close to the front. Another thing, if it had hip roofs instead of gables, it would, it would appear to be less massive. And what else? I'm sorry. It seems that, looking at it, that many of the design decisions were made to be less costly, and that the cheapest choices were made, so we have concerns about the appearance of the house and the finishes that'll be on the house. I thank you for this opportunity to, to hear us, or opportunity for us to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Crystal Wong.
Mayor O'Kee, council members and staff. Good evening. I just wanted to, I'm here to voice my frustration, because at the planning commission meeting in December, I felt that Commissioner Barnes and Cale listened to us, and offered suggestions to which both homeowners and neighbors, as well as the architect and the new homeowner, agreed upon, and then I was completely floored when Commissioner Riggs just kind of discounted everything that was actually agreed upon. Amazing. Anyway, most of what has been said by my neighbors, I agree, I agree with, and I just wanted to say, like, I, I live right next door, I will be the neighbor, and so it'll be kind of like, and I have a six, my, my house is 16 feet, so it's going to be kind of like me and Kevin Durant. Imagine, you know, and I do like basketball, thank goodness, but, you know, I mean, it's, and my, my side yard, which will be right below, is the biggest part of my yard, so that's where I'll just be like this. But thanks.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you.
Crystal, may I just ask you a question? It's a similar question I asked of Eric. Would landscaping help? Has there been?
Yeah, I think landscaping would help, yes.
Okay. And have you had any discussions with the builder about landscaping, or no?
No.
Okay. Because that's something, yeah, we can ask for. Thanks.
Any other speakers on this topic? Okay, so.
I'm out of time.
Oh, come on up, and then if you can, yes, it's okay to come up, and then if you could kindly fill out a card and provide it to, to Judy after, that would be great.
So, thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate being here. I am, I think.
And if you want to bend the mic a little bit closer.
Sure. I am Susan Leonard, and I live at 735 Gilbert, and I am directly across the street from the house, so my living room and my family room and all of my windows look directly upon the structure. I'm the elder statesman, I think, on the block. I think I've been there 24 years, and I am the longest resident, longest tenured resident on the block. You know, one of the things I've enjoyed the most about the neighborhood is it seems very rural, and, you know, the houses are charming, and the character, the character of the neighborhood is, it's just, it's just charming. And, you know, when you look at this, this, these drawings, and you look at the plans, you know, the house just seems a bit industrial to me. It doesn't really look like a house that fits in on the block. And one of the things I'm most concerned about are the, the finishes, and, and what types of things and types of materials are going to be used on the finishes, and I am concerned, as the neighbors have all said, about the, just the girth and the, and the, you know, the structure itself, the size of it, and how imposing it is compared to the rest of the, the neighborhood. So I hope that, you know, the council will listen, I hope you do visit the block, and you can take a look at what the houses look like, and, and the charm of the neighborhood, and, and that we're heard. So appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you very much, Susan. All right, with that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
And, got a motion and second by acclamation, are we closing the public hearing? Okay. So let's come back up here. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Keith, I see your light.
Thank you. I just, I have a couple of questions. Are you, are you the architect?
Yeah.
Oh, may I ask you a few questions?
Chris Balding, the architect.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hello. I just, you've heard the neighbors, and it sounds like you're in agreement to reduce the height to, by 18 inches.
Yes.
But could you just also talk about the finishes that you're using?
So this will be a high-quality finishes, so as, as the planning commission wanted us to have smooth stucco, our windows are, are wood frame clad windows that are recessed from the, from the, there's a two-inch recess, so they don't look like real plain, cheap apartment-type windows, they're nice, high-quality windows. We have stone veneer on the porch.
Can I just?
It's a high-profile comp shingles, it's, so it's all high-quality finishes.
Is the interior, is it for one, one family? There was a concern about two chimneys, and is it a subdivided home?
No, it's, it's definitely a family home. It's three, three bedrooms upstairs with the master, and a, and a guest suite downstairs.
Okay. And then also, you heard questions about, is it possible, I never liked designing from here, believe me, but I'm going to ask the questions, because I've heard them asked, to recess the second story a little bit more?
Not without redesigning the whole, the whole thing, yeah.
May I ask about landscaping? Did you, do you have a landscaping plan, or is that not conceived?
So we don't, we don't need the landscaping plan until we do the construction plans?
Right.
So they, they weren't as part of this package.
I understand. I think sometimes it helps neighbors, it helps me, too, just to see, I think landscaping can do wonders for mass.
Yeah, and they're, and we're completely willing to do landscaping that helps the neighbors. There's, and as mitigation for my client cutting the trees down, she's been required to plant two large trees, 60-inch box trees, and the arborist has picked out a cork oak and a live oak, one of which the arborist suggested in the front yard, and one in the back, but we could also put the, both in the front, if, if the neighbors.
I, I'll let you, what I would suggest is just, after seeing many of these over the years, to have you work with the neighbors on landscaping to help them.
Completely happy to do that.
Yeah, I think that's, that's something that really helps with privacy issues along the fence line and the backyard, and, you know, planting things on your side and on their side, if that's what, you know, they come to wish, but if, have you work with them, and, and make sure that there's a landscaping plan that, that works. And that, that would be my suggestion on that. But thank you.
Other questions?
Great. Do we have any other questions? Any comments? Councilmember Klein, I see sort of a, you're wrestling with something that you'd like to ask a question.
Yeah, I, it's, I think, I mean, we've dealt with appeals like this. I think the one I remember that's very similar was the Olive project that came in, and they, because it was first, in, in a lot of, you know, there was a lot of one-story homes, and it was one of the early ones that did a redevelopment, and, and the concerns were quite similar. It was, at first, it was, it was, there was a conversation, and then the conversation stopped. It started, and then it stopped, and, and because the project started, kept going, it felt like there wasn't any responsiveness to what was heard, and so the concerns started getting, become higher and higher, and a lot of it was, okay, it's, it's tall, and that's going to be a hard adjustment, because it's close to the lot line, it's within the guidelines, but our house is much smaller. That's first, and then after that, it was, why are there windows on that side that expose the entire backyard, front yard, my entire privacy on, and then why is it not broken up? Why are the walls so flat? And it had no articulation whatsoever. I think those conversations all have been had in the commission meetings, to a degree, that it becomes a, how do you, you fit this on the lot to make it so that it's, it's, it can stand in its most modest form? And so it becomes a, is it too close to the, to the front, so that it looks larger than it actually is, because it's up more than the other homes are? Sometimes that, that's the case, because there's a tree protection in the back. And there are times where you can adjust that or not. Then it also is a matter of, that height we talked about, you can, you have drainage, and it completely changes the cost structure if you have to put in the underground drainage, and I understand that. You know, that sometimes, some homeowners can't get away from that, so, you know, I'm, I'm sympathetic to it, but I also know that's a reality of investment. So, so it becomes, how do you shrink this down? And in lieu of redesigning a house, then how do you look at the drainage, and how do you take some of the, the girth out of the, just to say, the, the ground gets elevated, the house goes into code, but the ground has lifted it up two feet, and so by code, it's actually two feet above what it was, I mean, what it would be if it was at its largest. And so it's, it's, for me, it's, it becomes a discussion a lot on what's on the ground. Once they've gone through the planning commission, it becomes, how do you, how do you position the, the house itself, and then you look at, how do you, how do you set up your drainage system? And, and can you get those 18 inches back relatively easily, and then can you, can you create a more modest way that this thing is fronting? And so trees help. You know, I, I think frankly, you've got to have coverage that's probably, what we did on Olive, I think, is we did say, look, you, you've got to find ways to cover that side, you got, and whether it's certain types of, of, you know, trellis and then trees, that bushes, I think bamboo was brought up, things like that, but there's, that, that stuff's horrible. So there's other types of, of coverage, and we, I think we require that a lot for these larger buildings, so that it's not just at the fence line, it's many, many feet over, and it's thick, and it takes the visual away. And I think that's a mandatory, at, at the least, but I also am curious just about the, the construction of the drainage, to see if there's any way to, to modify that, so that it's not changing the architecture, but it's just changing the way they drain the lot, the, the property. Keep in mind that I realize this, this fits within everything we do. You know, it, it follows all the rules that were set forth. I'd be surprised if Henry Riggs didn't mention immediately, at least once, an overlay, because he had an overlay in his neighborhood, where the entire community signed a petition and put in an overlay, so you couldn't develop over a certain height in his, he, he mentions that all the time. That's Henry Riggs has brought up overlays over and over again. Yeah. Yeah. Well, it, it, but he does talk about the overlay, and I, and it, when, when you hear about it, you're usually in an appeal. You know, it's too late, right? So you're like, whoa, the overlay, okay, thanks for that. They, they're hard to get, you have to get a high percentage of homeowners to agree to it, and they're rigid, and they're hard to get, you know, taken off, so, you know, I, I think there's, there's. So, you know, I think there's, there's a couple ways to go. I think there has to be an investment in the landscaping that gets significant coverage on the sides where it's the closest. And if it's a tree in the front that gives a lot, a hardy tree that gives coverage and that grows fast, oftentimes you get the oaks and they don't, you know, they grow, they're great trees at 40 years down the road, but they, they grow slower than like a redwood or something like the redwood trees do. It doesn't have to be red, it could be a pine or something like, these things that fill fast, but they look, they look nice. And then it's, it's, it's that. And then I do want to ask probably, you've evaluated the drainage, I'm sure, and it's probably cost prohibitive because it becomes a whole different project when you look at the rock underground kind of drainage. Being the architect, you probably aren't in charge of drainage. But do you know if they've ruled that out completely from an option? Or is it, it's something that the homeowner is not brought up or have they responded to? Maybe you know, you can bring something up. I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I'm not going to talk about louvers.
So, right now, the drainage plan is, is, does not require any pumps. So, it's a purely gravity-flow best practices of drainage right now. So, if we were to lower the floor down, then we would be in the situation of having to pump it somewhere.
You would have to pump it somewhere?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Curious just if there's a specific reason why our probably most tenured commissioner walked from 18 when it was agreed upon to 12, aside from the fact that this does fit right in with, with all regulations, and he's hesitant to go against that unless it's something that he feels fit. I don't know, Bill, did you get anything on reporting back about anything else except for, it might just be rigid policy?
I think it was philosophical.
Yeah.
I do mention, he did send an email on it, so I think that's.
Yeah, I saw that. It kind of covered what the comments he had in the, I'd love to see there be a little bit more flexibility in how we lay this, this structure out, but I do think we need to try to get some of the height back since it was, it was agreed upon from the beginning. I think the planning commission did a good job going through this. It's just, there's some areas where I think there was obviously some disagreement, and then it went a little bit sideways toward the end. But I'll speak for myself frankly, and I don't know because I wasn't there.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor Mueller?
Bill, the reason we're seeing this is because it's a substandard lot?
Yes.
And what would the, how could it have been designed so we wouldn't have seen it?
Based on the size of the lot, if it was a single-story house, then it would not have required a use permit, right? Yeah.
That's correct.
So, it's the fact that it's a two-story house, any two-story house on a substandard lot, which is, you know, half of that lots in the city, or 40% of the lots in the city are considered substandard, would require a use permit.
All right. So, when we say it's allowed, it's allowed with the use permit, but technically, it's not allowed under current, you need the use permit.
You need, you need the use permit for a two-story home on a substandard, on a non-conforming lot. And so, it kicks it into the use permit, but essentially, the position it has been is that people are allowed to build two-story homes. It's just, it has to fit within the neighborhood context. You have to make the required findings. And typically, you know, they are made for essentially a house that is pretty much at the maximum size, not necessarily height. I mean, there are these factors like pulling the height down by 18 inches that, you know, mitigate some of the impacts or concerns of the neighbors, the neighborhood to help make it fit into the neighborhood.
And my understanding from the comments tonight is that there's basically three things. It's 12 to 18 inches. It's can you move it back, the second story back, and can you do something with landscaping? Am I missing, is that all of it? And there's agreement that it goes to 18 inches?
Yeah. So, if the council, so I understood that the applicant or the architect on behalf of the applicant is comfortable moving, reducing the height to 18 inches.
So, that's done.
So, when, when you get to a motion, we can.
Right.
Modify the 12 inches to 18 inches. Number two, we can include a condition that there is a landscape plan that would help soften and screen the aesthetic impacts of the size of the house that's subject to planning division, review, and approval. And in fact, that landscape plan could also be submitted to the planning commission for approval with the modifications to the architecture so that at least the planning commission is weighing in, or maybe the, actually, the neighbors would prefer it, not go back to the planning commission.
In the past, we've said, we've indicated, we've mandated like a discussion between the neighbors and the builder with the potential for first sign-off. And if there's a sign-off, it doesn't go half, have to go to the planning commission or something like that.
We have done that on occasion that.
So, we can do that, and so, that's, I think, probably.
Regarding the landscaping.
Regarding the landscaping. So, the last issue then for us to look at tonight is, really the only issue left for us to look at is whether or not we require the builder to put the second story further back.
Correct. Which, which is essentially then a redesign of the house, which might then require that it go back to the planning commission or through a process because it, it likely would change window placement and a lot of other things if you're starting to do that because the floor plan just won't work the same.
Can I ask, can I look at you guys and say you got two out of three? Are you guys, are you satisfied with that?
Yeah. So, I think we.
Great. Then I think we're done. So, let's make a motion and then.
Okay.
Go ahead, Kat. But I think, I actually really think we're done.
No, I don't. Councilmember Carlton.
So, I'm really glad to see that the homeowner and the architect have changed the windows, the vents, and all the things that was required, and that you're being flexible and reasonable. Thank you. Sometimes we have people who aren't. And so, I'm really glad to see that you're working to try and find a good solution. I understand that the house would be two feet below the maximum allowed, and there's another house on the same block that's taller, so it would be the second tallest house.
The staff report?
That's what the staff report says. It will be almost the tallest.
Would it be the tallest? Okay.
It's on the staff, the staff report says it will be the second tallest, so I won't go here or there. But honestly, six inches, six inches is fine if you want to do 18. I mean, this is six inches. If that makes, because I, I mean, I absolutely understand how frustrating that is. When you, when you negotiate and you think you have a deal and you're emotionally vested, and then somebody changes it, that's frustrating, and I get that. But, I mean, it's six inches. If that's really going to make a difference, that's fantastic. But I agree. I mean, if they're okay doing 18 and not 12, fine. Thank you for being flexible. Landscaping always makes houses better. I'm a, I'm a big plant fan anyway. And so, putting in more trees, putting in more shrubbery, it provides more privacy, it makes the neighborhood look better, I think, to have really good landscaping. And so, I think that's great if you guys want to work together and find something that's, that everyone agrees with. I'm really happy to see that we have really nice, reasonable neighbors that are willing to work and get that done, and it seems like we have a good, flexible architect. So, I honestly believe that you guys will be fine working this out. And so, I wish you good luck. And I want to thank all of you because you're all being really flexible, and we really appreciate that because it helps, it helps build the community when we can find a good solution and move forward.
Okay. I'll just make a, oh, yes, okay.
It's, it's, it sounds like it's not serious, but it's a serious question. Bill, are there requirements for a developer who builds a new home and it's for sale? Are there disclosure requirements if they have serious dispute in their neighborhood?
I mean, there are questions on the, there are two formal disclosure forms. There is the transfer disclosure statement, it's called a TDS, and the other is the supplemental seller disclosure.
Right.
Checklist that has questions about issues, problems in the neighborhood.
Okay.
And so, if you.
Yeah.
Had somebody that was planning a rock band next door or something like that, you'd probably have to disclose that if you.
Yeah, but an entire neighborhood who hates the house, but it's there anyways.
Probably not a disclosure. I mean, it's.
Yeah, I asked just because, this is far from that, but because most of the time, it's, it's people moving into the house. Right? And so, it's different that, in that sense, because they go through the process, they have to slog through it on their own. So, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Yes.
And by the way, I think all of us have been down Gilbert, so we do know the area.
Mark?
Thank you. I just need, I just want to make sure that we have clarity before you move to a motion, and it may take the city attorney to weigh in. So, the condition that the, or A condition that the planning commission approved was to make some other modifications to the fencing and to the glass and to the gables and the louvers. And what that required was what we call the conformance memo, to go back to the planning commission once the applicant, if they have agreed to it, had made those changes. And if the commission did not want to, to have the case agendized again, that staff would make those approvals. So, I just want to make sure that there's a comfort level moving forward with that.
Include landscaping in that.
With these additional changes that you're requesting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Yes. And in general, we tend to delegate for the planning commission a lot of those specific architectural issues. There's often one or two architects on the planning commission. But the whole reason why there is this use permit process, since I've been through it recently, is, is very much to allow a possibility of this sort of, allow neighbors to weigh in, basically, and to sort of, that notification process and try to, right, absolutely. So, in this case, I am gratified that there is, there is a compromise that I see here. Appreciate Vice Mayor Mueller just cutting to the chase here on the, on the items. So, I think, is there a, would you like to make a motion then? Or how to, which is related to. Mr. Selwick, would you like to come up at the mic? I'll grant you because we're, we don't normally do this, but it's a question, I think, from.
Just as a clarification, the, we talked about some of the mitigations, but one being the landscaping. And how is that proposed, that we work that out? It sounds like you're saying, good luck, go, go deal with it, but how do we enact that? Is there a plan?
No, 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 no. I don't, I'm not saying good luck, go deal with it. We have a long history of staff facilitating communications between the people and the architect.
Great.
And we've done this quite a few times, so, no, 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 don't think that at all. I was actually just trying to thank you because I felt like everyone has been really flexible and wanting to work together. But staff will help you.
And in fact, what Vice Mayor Mueller was saying was.
In the conformance. So, in the conformance, what will happen is they're going to have their plan, they're going to show it to you guys. You guys are going to say.
Landscape plan.
Landscape plan. You're going to say whether you like it or not. You guys are going to confer that if you don't like it, it's not, it hasn't conformed, it goes back to the planning commission from the deal with that.
Correct. So, the, but the conformance memo process is, is a staff communicated email to the planning commission.
Right.
But prior to that, we would involve the neighbors to make sure that there was the agreement before forwarding it to the planning commission.
Absolutely. Great.
Thank you.
We don't often disagree with planning commission. We try not to as much as possible, but I will move that we, yeah. Oh, you move.
Do you want me, do you want me to give you some language for a motion?
Yeah. Well, why don't you give the language?
So, so, condition four, it is to uphold the appeal in part and essentially approve the use permit with modifications. The modifications being to change condition 4A4, the special project-specific conditions to reduce the overall height by 18 inches through a reduction in ceiling heights or the foundation, and to add a condition 4A5, which says, prior to submission of complete building permit application, the applicant shall submit a landscape plan to soften the views, aesthetic impacts of the project after consulting with and seeking approval of the adjacent neighbors.
We all good with that?
I have a clarifying.
So moved.
Oh, go ahead. Just, I, Bill, when you were speaking, I didn't hear, I know you said, reduce the height by 18 inches and the ceiling heights, but did you only say the ceiling heights?
No, ceiling heights or the foundation, which is where the, what the condition previously.
Okay, that's fine. So, ceiling heights or foundation, they can, the architect can choose how.
Correct. Or a combination of the two.
Yep, that's fine. Thank you. I just wanted to be clear.
Is there a second? Second from Councilmember Klein? All right. Thank you, everyone. As I mentioned earlier, in regular business, I won, the charter measure on the ballot has been postponed to the next meeting. However, I do want to check if anyone wanted to speak tonight and needed to and isn't available at the next meeting. I give them the option, once, twice? Okay. All right. Just want to make sure. All right. So, we've got informational items. I do have a question on J1, but I wanted to first, actually, we have a speaker on J2, and not a surprise, Jen Wallison, welcome.
Good evening, Jen.
Thank you for prioritizing Safe House to School in your work plan. I'm super excited to partner with city council and staff and to get it going. And thank you all for your conversation earlier about trying to get different Safe Routes infrastructure things funded. I really appreciate that.
We like the way they're.
Yeah, and we're just parents for Safe Routes. You know, we're here in the community, we want to support the things you guys are doing. So, we look forward to getting this program kicked off. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jen. So, not seeing Nick here. Alex, if I can ask that this question be relayed.
Sure.
To Nick and, and I think Gene on J1. I just wanted to make sure on the land management information system replacement, a key part of the scope that we're getting includes online permit submissions. I think I saw it in there, but, but there's so many different things, and obviously, the backend is a big part of this.
Right. It's multifaceted, and one of the intentions is that, that public-facing piece, and one of the big issues, we know we've heard from the council over and over, is online permitting, people being able to get that water heater permit online.
Okay, great.
So, that is the intention. I will make sure Nick calls it out.
It's an expensive project, and I want to make sure that there are.
Understood.
Feature and customer service and productivity benefits that come out of it. So, great. That's it. Wonderful. No city manager reports. Any council member reports? Let's see. Well, I mean, I know we also had a meeting regarding the Stanford Cup that, and I'll just simply say, it raised a lot of good questions about, not just from Menlo Park, but unincorp from San Mateo County, and also the towns of Woodside and Portola Valley, regarding particularly, as well as Palo Alto, on traffic impacts. And I thought about meeting again in the future before the draft, or before the EIR is finalized to potentially discuss traffic mitigation specifics. And, oh, that's right, and Vice Mayor Mueller's recused on it. So, but I think that's the only report, right?
All right.
Okay, great. All right. Meeting adjourned until the 19th. Thank you.